Welcome to the regular meeting of the Cape Coral City Council. Today is July 26, 2023. This meeting now comes to order. Please stand for the invocation and the Pledge Allegiance by Councilmember Shepherd.
Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom comes; thy will be done on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us, and lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil. For thine is the kingdom, and the power, and the glory forever and ever. Amen.
Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Yes, Your Honor, before I call the roll, I would like to announce that Councilmember Cosden has asked to be excused, and I will mark her so. Mayor Gunther?
Here.
Councilmembers Cummings?
Here.
Hayden?
Here.
Long?
Here.
Shepherd?
Here.
Steinke?
Here.
Welsh?
Here.
Seven present, one excused.
Item five is changes to the agenda. Do we have any changes to the agenda, or do we adopt the agenda as presented?
Motion to adopt.
Second.
Any council discussion? Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Cummings?
Here.
Gunther?
Aye.
Aye.
Hayden?
Aye.
Long?
Aye.
Shepherd?
Aye.
Steinke?
Aye.
Welsh?
Aye.
Seven ayes, motion carried.
Item six is recognitions and achievements. Six A is community recognitions. Award, Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This evening's Community Recognition Award goes to Eliza Odom of Diplomat Elementary School, who was named both the Florida and National AAA School Safety Patrol of the Year for 2022-23 school year. Each year, nearly 700,000 children participate at more than 35,000 schools across the country, and Eliza stood out from the rest due to her passion to help others. Eliza has raised thousands of dollars to help pediatric patients with cardiac issues. In the wake of Hurricane Ian, she put together meal kits for members of our community, and she looks after neighbors' homes when they're out of town. In addition to this, she regularly helps out in one of her ESE classes at her school with the teachers in the classroom. So, thank you, Eliza, for all your great work. We have an award for you.
Again, congratulations, and thank you for all your hard work and your leadership. Moving on to item seven is approval of the minutes. Do we have a motion to approve the minutes for the regular meeting of July 12, 2023?
Motion to approve.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Move on to item eight on the agenda, Citizens Input Time. Citizens input is a matter concerning city government. There'll be a total of 60 minutes, three minutes per individual. Please remember to state your name for the record. We use the podium to my left, your right.
Good afternoon. My name is Paul Benasia. I reside on Pelican Boulevard, just north of Rotary Park, and thank you for the opportunity to speak this afternoon. I'm opposed to the proposed Redfish Point development on 350 acres of wetlands south of Rotary Park. On July 15th, we had a public meeting. I was hoping for about a turnout of about 80 residents. We had over 200. I am here today to make you aware that the landlord, landlords, landowners are not painting a realistic picture of the full impact of this project. This is their initial conceptual design they have published, and I'm aware that they want to sell their property to a developer and provide a basic concept to encourage them to buy the land. They have submitted an amendment to the land use plan that indicates 100 acres to be developed out of 350. So, my question is, where is the fill coming from to elevate this land? The marina they depict is located in the river. That's unrealistic. There's no breakwater, no access to emergency services. On Slide two, this is Gulf Harbor and Tarpon Point Marinas, which are behind breakwaters and have access for emergency vehicles. These marinas were created by dredging, and the fill used to create a breakwater and elevate the land for structures. On Slide three, I'm not an engineer, nor do I work in the construction industry, but in comparing similar local projects, it is more realistic conceptual illustration. This provides for a dredged canal along the uplins to fill, to provide fill and elevate the land to meet code, provide road access for emergency vehicles, and for the marina, locate the marina behind a breakwater and shield boats, and create an inlet. Would it be cost-effective to bring in boats, bring in fill or dredge? I don't really know the answer, but I know that approximately 14,000 truckloads would need to come into this community to raise that 100 acres just one foot. That's assuming that one foot is all that's required. My point, the landowners are not painting a realistic picture of the full impact of this project. I get it, they just want to do the minimum necessary to increase the value of the property and really don't have an interest in what it will finally look at. But I care, and my neighbors care. This will go beyond the initial 100 acres. Please do not open the door to construction on this property. Thank you for your time.
Thanks, sir.
Mayor, good to remember the councils. My name is Bill Barrett, and I and my wife live in South Cape, just across the street from Rotary Park. Because we suffered massive damages to our house from Hurricane Ian, I'm here today urging you to oppose the huge development that is planned and proposed for Redfish Point. My comments today will be very brief. I'd just like to take a moment to talk a little bit about mangroves. It's well-known that mangroves protect our coastlines, they stop erosion, but most importantly, they provide protection against wind and storm surges caused from hurricanes. It has been shown time and time again that when mangroves are removed, the degree of damages from the hurricanes increase. The proposed project of Redfish Point entails the removal and development of approximately 110 acres of prime wetlands and mangroves. If only a portion of the mangroves, a mangrove system is removed, it compromises the integrity of the total system. Developing 110 acres of Redfish Point would thus seriously make more vulnerable the properties and the lives of the people who live near Redfish Point. We're now living in an era of significant climate change, change that is manifesting itself in wild fluctuations of weather, flooding, droughts, and wildfires all across the United States. Communities, cities, and states are doing whatever they can to come up with plans to protect their citizens. Here in southwest Florida, the issue is one of increasing hurricanes, both in frequency and intensity. So, my question for you is this: if it's given that mangroves provide a defense against hurricanes, why are we even considering a development that will decrease that protection and increase the vulnerability of the already existing neighborhoods near Redfish Point? We should be trying to find means to increase the protection of those neighborhoods, certainly not to decrease them. So, I strongly urge you to oppose this huge development of Redfish Point. Development is generally good for the growth of a city. I understand that. Growth means the betterment of the city, but most certainly not in this case, certainly not at Redfish Point. This development of this area is certainly not good when it endangers the lives and the properties of its citizens, which this certainly will certainly do. This is a bad development for the citizens of Cape Coral, and it's a bad development for the city of Cape Coral. I urge you to oppose this development. Thank you very much for the opportunity.
Thank you, sir.
Good afternoon. My name is Patty Gar. The opportunity to be here to express my strong opposition to the Redfish Point development in southwest Cape, and to let you know why I oppose it. My husband and I live on Eldorado Parkway West, close to the Pelican Boulevard and Rose Garden intersection. Our home faces the large vacant lot that begins at Eldorado Parkway Rest and runs south along Rose Garden down to Sixth Place southwest. We did all we could to prepare for the storm, possible damage, before we evacuated to my mother-in-law's apartment in an assisted living facility. We had no media sources, so we were unaware of what was happening during the hurricane and how it would impact our home and our lives until we were able to return home two days later. We had water all over the floor and a 12-inch water line on the walls throughout the house and on all of the furniture. We knew we had a very short amount of time to get everything we owned out of the house before mold set in. Once we saw a video of waist-high storm surge gushing up Rose Garden from the river across that vacant lot, it was clear what caused the damage. It was a difficult task, not only from the emotional trauma involved in losing almost everything you own, but also because my husband had recently undergone back surgery, and I was scheduled to have a knee surgery. So, the two of us, in our mid-70s with significant injuries, were tasked with dragging everything we owned out of our home to the street. Fortunately, we were able to hire the contractors next door to get the furniture out. We were blessed to be able to rent an apartment in my mother-in-law's assisted living facility until we were able to move into a rental home where we lived for six months while the inside of our home was demolished and rebuilt. It has been a long process getting our home back together. Our bedroom furniture we ordered in April was delivered earlier this afternoon. I share these details of our experience, not because I think you didn't hear hundreds of similar stories following the hurricane, but rather, so hopefully, all such stories you've heard will be fresh in your memories when you consider whether to approve this development that could have significant consequences for the residents in southwest Cape. There's a reason that the current zoning requires this property to be preserved, given that we are going to experience more hurricanes, possibly more powerful than Ian, as well as sea level rise. We know that Ian storm surge destroys property, and we saw with our neighbors in Fort Myers, storm surge causes deaths. In closing, I urge you to reject this proposal that would require changes to these protected wetlands that would risk the homes and possibly the lives of approximately 3,500 residents in Cape Coral. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Mayor, members of City Council, good afternoon. My name is Ruth Hague. My husband and I live on a canal on Seventh Court, directly off of Rose Garden Road, and that makes Rotary Park our next-door neighbor. The lowest point in our home received 23 and 1/2 inches of water. We lost four vehicles, along with virtually everything, on our first floor. We, like so many of our neighbors, are still rebuilding. We still have a pot in our front yard, and that was what was destroyed by Ian just 10 months ago. The physical, mental, financial, and psychological damage that comes with a storm such as Ian is something you just can't explain. And now, just months after the most devastating storm to ever hit Florida, some of the people who were hardest hit are being forced to live under the ominous cloud of this nightmare project. It's nothing short of cruel, in my opinion. I'm not alone in these fears. I have been helping our webmaster document comments submitted to our opposition website, and I see comments like, "I can't even believe this project is being considered," or, "I am in shock and I'm saddened to see the leadership of Cape Coral would even consider such devastating insult to the environment and the quality of life here in Cape Coral." And what would be gained by this unnecessary development? Another luxury high-rise hotel in Marina? As the crow flies, this proposed site sits less than a mile from Tarpon Point and less than a mile and a half from Cape Harbor. We don't need, nor can our infrastructure handle, this ridiculous proposal. Cape Coral is one of the fastest-growing cities in the country with over 200,000 people now. A recent study identifies Cape Coral as having, being among nine cities in Florida, most at risk for future storms. Compromising the city's natural protection and raising the storm risk to residents makes no sense. It's frankly a concept that this community just cannot stomach. Being one of the worst storms to ever hit the U.S., the country, and the world is watching how southwest Florida rebuilds and prepares for the next big storm. We have the unique opportunity to be an example for future storm preparations and recovery efforts. We can start now by not spending another minute or tax dollar trying to help the owners make this bad idea work. I would submit to you that we are stewards for this land for the time we inhabit it. In your role as City Council members, you are charged with serving the needs of the people who live and work here. The decisions you make today will shape the future of Cape Coral and all of us who reside here. When the history books have been written, what do you want your name and legacy to be attached to? Allowing the unnecessary and irresponsible destruction of lifesaving mangroves, wetlands, and wildlife? Or, you took the bold approach and brave steps to protect the people and precious resources here in our community?
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you so much.
Good afternoon. My name is Jim Pavick. I live on the intersection of First Court and 58th Street in Cape Coral. I was here a couple months ago talking, my focus then was First Street, which is still concerned, but I'm mainly concerned about this whole development. And my question for you today, I'm sure a lot of you do an analytical view, do some objective criteria on decision that you need to make here whenever this comes forward. What are the things right about this development, and what are the things wrong about this development? And I guess when I think about it, it seems like there's much more wrong about it than right about it, but I'm sure there's things that are positive for about it. Maybe perhaps for the city of Cape Coral, maybe there's some macroeconomic reasons that makes this good. But my question for you is, in my mind, this decision shouldn't be made based on the city of Cape Coral, this decision should be made based on the people of Cape Coral. And when you look about, for the people of Cape Coral, additional traffic, hurricane risk, loss of wildlife, I can't see how that could be good for the people of Cape Coral. So, that's all I have today. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else wishing to speak during public input? Seeing none, public input is now closed. Is there any council discussion on citizens input? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to item nine. Nine A is consent agenda. I'll open up the consent agenda for council to pool any items for discussion. If there's no items to be pooled, is there a motion to approve the items on the consent agenda?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Madam City Clerk, could you call the roll, please?
Cummings?
Aye.
Gunther?
Aye.
Hayden?
Aye.
Long?
Aye.
Shepherd?
Aye.
Steinke?
Aye.
Welsh?
Aye.
Seven ayes, motion carried.
Thank you. Nine B is appointments to boards and committees. We do not have any listed tonight. Nine C is unfinished business. Is there any follow-up items for City Council? Okay, seeing no lights, we will move on to item nine D is new business. D1 is the City Auditor's Office FY '24 Strategic Plan and Annual Audit Plan.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. Andrea Russell, City Auditor, for the record. I'm here tonight to present the Fiscal Year '24 Strategic Audit Plan for your approval. The plan presented to you was approved by Audit Committee at the July 12th meeting that we had earlier this month. The plan's based on updates to the risk assessment that we completed for fiscal years '22, '23, and '24, and it can be adjusted throughout the year as needed. Does anyone have any questions or proposed changes to the plan as presented?
I know we've gotten a copy of the plan. Does council have any questions for the City Auditor?
I don't.
If not, we need a motion for approval.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any other discussion by council? Seeing none, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Cummings?
Aye.
Gunther?
Aye.
Hayden?
Aye.
Long?
Aye.
Shepherd?
Aye.
Steinke?
Aye.
Welsh?
Aye.
Seven ayes, motion carried.
Thank you, ma'am. Move on to item 10, Ordinances and Resolution. Ten A is quasi-judicial hearing, or first hearing, is Resolution 157-23. Madam City Clerk, please read the title.
Resolution 157-23, a resolution providing for the vacation of plat for an alley and the underlying easements located between lots 1 through 8 and lots 65 through 72, Block 4127, Cape Coral Unit 59, providing for the vacation of plat for platted public utility and drainage easements adjacent to the platted alley lying in lots 1 through 8 and lots 65 through 72, Block 4127, Cape Coral Unit 59. Property located at 6 Burnt Store Road North, 16 Burnt Store Road North, 5 Northwest 32nd Place, and 13 Northwest 32nd Place, providing an effective date.
This is a quasi-judicial hearing. Anyone wishing to speak or provide testimony must be sworn in.
Please raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear or affirm to tell the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
Okay, I'll turn it over to staff to begin with.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Sorry, I moved through the agenda so fast. I ran up here and lost my breath.
Need a water? We'll get you water. I got one right here. I haven't even opened it.
Thank you. Thank you. The, there are multiple owners of this request. Linda Miller is representing them. They request to vacate an alley right-of-way and underlying easements, along with PUEs abutting the alley. They are located in Block 4127, and depicted here. They are zoned C, commercial. They total 2.36 acres. They are all unimproved. A 20-foot-wide alley separates the properties. The right-of-way and easements are proposed to be vacated. They are depicted here in Exhibit A, and the PUEs are depicted on the following exhibits. Staff conducted an analysis in accordance with 3.4.5B and found that the site has access to three streets. A driveway is will likely not be permissible along Burnt Store Road. The alley segment being vacated is not needed for service or emergency management vehicles, and the easements underlying the alley are not required. A perimeter PUE will be retained. No new PUEs are needed. Easements along both ends of the alley will be retained for maintaining a perimeter PUE. For item three, staff found that alternate routes are not needed. Each site in Block 4127 has frontage on at least one public street. Regarding item four, staff found a cross-axis easement will be provided by the applicants so that motorists entering or exiting the alley north of the site can exit to Northwest 32nd Place. That is depicted in this easement, or this exhibit. Regarding item five, staff found that all three utility providers have issued letters of no objection, and a six-foot easement on both ends of the alley will be retained to provide a continuous PUE. With respect to the comp plan, Policy 3.6, this application is supported by that policy. The vacation will unify four sites and provide for a developable site that will have full block depth. Staff has recommended approval with conditions. The hearing examiner recommended approval with conditions. There were 10 speakers, nine opposed, one in support. Prior to this public hearing, six people opposed the request, and two other people requested additional information via telephone call. Thank you for your patience, and I'll stand by for any questions.
And take a drink of that water. Okay. I believe I will now open up the public hearing. If there's anyone wishing to speak on Resolution 157-23, please come forward.
Good evening. For the record, Neil Montgomery, Pivce Law Firm. I just want to know for the record that I agree with the expert testimony provided by the staff and Ms. Miller at both the hearing examiners' proceedings and here today. The hearing examiner noted as does staff that vacations are regulated by Section 3.4.5. So, the criteria that you have to consider is those set forth in Section 3.4.5. That's an important issue because the hearing examiner noted in her recommendation that she has to base her decision on competent substantial evidence and based on the criteria. At the hearing, there were several people, as staff noted, that spoke and who communicated, but their concern was not regarding the vacation and not regarding the expert testimony and not regarding the criteria for vacation. It was in regard to the potential use of the property. This property, as the staff noted, has commercial zoning and a commercial future land use category. Therefore, it has to be developed with a commercial use that's consistent with both the comp plan and the LDC. the comp plan and the LDC. This council has consistently tried to encourage and promote commercial development, and in light of that, you have a policy in the comp plan that says, "We're going to study for more areas to change to commercial, and when you develop commercial, we would like for you to try to create compactness. We'd like for you to try to assemble properties so that we can have larger parcels and not, you know, a commercial parcel the size of a residential lot." In order to make that larger parcel viable, you will need vacations. The staff and Ms. Miller have indicated that there are no impediments under the rules to allow for the vacation. So we would respectfully request that you uphold the recommendation of the hearing examiner, and we would reserve the right for rebuttal, and Ms. Miller will now proceed.
Thank you. Good evening. Linda Miller, Vice President of Avalon Engineering, Certified Planner for this particular project on the vacation of plat, VAC 2233. We represent several property owners in this request. Patrick did a great job. He explained it, but I would like to run through the slides. We're requesting approval to vacate 6,235 square feet of a platted alley and all of the underlying public utility and drainage easements between lots one through eight, 65 through 72, and block 4127, Unit 59. We're also requesting to vacate 3,741 square feet of a platted six-foot public utility and drainage easement adjacent to the platted alley along the eastern and western sides. The site is located at 16 Burnt Store Road and Northeast 32nd Place. We are just vacating the alley. The site is zoned commercial and has a land use designation of commercial professional shown in red. Adjacent properties, the entire block is zoned commercial and has a land use of commercial professional, west across Northwest 32nd Place, east across Burnt Store Road, and south across Embers Parkway are single-family residential zoning districts with a single-family residential and single-family, multifamily land use. The application submitted for this vacation request meets the standards required by the city's Land Use and Development Section 3.4.5, which says an owner is eligible to file a vacation request if the application provides the following: color of title or ownership. Our application documents were provided to, that had owner's authorization for this request. We received letters of no objection from CenturyLink, Comcast, and Lee County Electric. Lee County Electric requires a continuous six-foot wide perimeter easement around the site that we will maintain. We provided sketch and legal descriptions and sketches to vacate the alley, the underlying easements, and the six-foot perimeter easements. That's what is required by code. This vacation of plat request is consistent with the city's comprehensive plan. Patrick explained that in Policy 3.6. The city may consider vacation of plat right-of-way vacations to facilitate land assembly. We are assembling land here and the development of a unified, continuous commercial project. This vacation of plat request will facilitate the simlage of properties. It will also provide full property depth encouraged by the city. The applicant requests approval of these three vacation of plat, to vacate 6,235 square feet of an alley and the underlying easements within the alley. The alley is 20-foot wide by 312 feet long. The alley and the underlying easement lies in the middle of a building site area and restricts the use of the parcel for building placement. If the alley is not vacated, the maximum lot depth of this block is 125 feet on both sides of the alley. Vacation number two is to vacate the six-foot wide by 311-foot public utility and drainage easement containing 1,868 square feet along the west side of the alley and the rear of lots one through eight. Vacation number three is to vacate the six-foot public utility and drainage easement along the east side of the alley within the rear lots of lots 65 through 72. The easement is six-foot wide and 312 feet long and contains 1,872 square feet. We have to provide a cross-access easement, and the legal description and sketch for this cross-access easement has been reviewed and approved by the city of Cape Coral. Section 3.4.5 states that vacations shall be reviewed in accordance with five standards, and Patrick went through those, but I would like to say standard number one, per the staff report, the alley right-of-way, the underlying, and the joint easements proposed in this vacation are not needed by the city to meet future transportation, utility, or drainage needs for this block. Number two, a cross-access easement is being provided for continuous use of the alley for future commercial developments to the north of the subject property. An alternative route, we are providing the cross-access easement which will provide the alternative use. The closure of this right-of-way will not negatively affect as the alley where it's located does not meet the city or the FDOT driveway spacing requirements for Burnt Store Road. This is very important because the standard on Burnt Store Road is different, and where that alley is placed, we would not be able to have a driveway off of Embers Parkway. We would not be able to connect to Burnt Store Road. So vacating this alley actually resolves a problem with an access point off of Embers. Number five, all three utility providers have issued out letters of no objection. Lee County Electric requires a six-foot public utility easement around the project site. This request is specifically for the vacation of a portion of the alley, the underlying easements and the adjacent six-foot easements only. This vacation request will unify four sites currently separated by a platted alley, providing full block depth of commercial development. This application is consistent with Policy 1.15 and 3.6 of the future land use element of the city's comprehensive plan and was submitted in accordance with Section 8.11 of the city's Land Use and Development Regulations. The applicant agrees with the staff report and the hearing examiner's recommendation of approval with the conditions provided, and we request your approval of this vacation of plat. Stand by to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak on Resolution 157-23? Please come forward. Seeing none, public hearing is now closed. Is there a motion for Resolution 157-23?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, now open up for any discussions from council. Councilmember Steinke.
Thank you. I've got two questions. Would anyone be able to quickly answer the question, how long has that property on the east side of Northwest 32nd Place been zoned commercial?
I believe I can answer that question, sir. That is typically an item we discuss in the staff report. I was not the initial case planner on this case, so bear me a minute while I consult Mr. Struvie's report.
And while you're looking up, the second piece might be easier to answer and might not be your bailiwick. The easement that's being provided to allow exit, if you will, entry and exit on the southern end of that alley, is there a particular reason why there is not an exit point or entry point on the east side of the alley as well as the west side of the alley?
I may defer that one to Transportation, but typically when a vacation like this occurs for a portion of, for example, the southern half of an alley, then an outlet, an entrance and an outlet is provided on one, to one side. And in this case, routing it to Burnt Store Road wasn't an option, so they brought it west.
Yeah, I'm just wondering why it wasn't an option on the Burnt Store Road side?
I will ask Transportation to come up and talk about that. The, to answer your first question, the property's been zoned commercial since approximately, it was done by Ordinance 418, so approximately 2018.
Okay, thank you.
First is Umbra, interim Polywork Director. I need to be sure in Kimberly.
I'm sorry?
Do you solemnly swear or affirm to tell the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
So, Burnt Store Road, they have control access by resolution of the county commissioners. So they have a restricted spacing, and this, the frontage of this property will meet the spacing to get an access. And what you see on Burnt Store Road right now, that's it. Unless you can not get reasonable access, otherwise, Lee County won't provide you with an access. In this particular property, they can get access through the local street.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? Seeing none, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Cummings?
No.
Gunter?
No.
Hayden?
Aye.
Long?
No.
Shepherd?
No.
Steinke?
Aye.
Welsh?
Aye.
Three ayes, four nays, motion failed.
Okay, we'll move on to the next item on the agenda is Resolution 158-23. Madam City Clerk, please read the title.
Resolution 158-23, a resolution providing for the vacation of plat for a portion of the Southwest Third Avenue right-of-way located adjacent to lots 41 through 43, block 188, Cape Coral, Unit 3, providing for the vacation of plat for platted easements lying in lots 41 and 42, block 188, Cape Coral, Unit 3, providing for the vacation of plat for platted easements lying in lot 43, block 188, Cape Coral, Unit 3, property located at 5414 and 5418 Southwest Third Avenue, providing an effective date.
This is a quasi judicial hearing. Anyone wishing to speak or provide testimony must be sworn in.
Please raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear or affirm to tell the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
Turn it over to staff first.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Justin Heller, Senior Planner with the Cape Coral Planning Division. This is a vacation of plat case for property that has single-family zoning with a single-family future land use classification. This property is located 5418 Southwest Third Avenue. They're requesting to vacate this area to give them greater flexibility in designing and constructing a new home on the site. The adjacent owners, 5414 Southwest Third Ave, have provided letters in support of the requests. So up on the screen, we got a current aerial showing the approximate location of the vacation of the street right-of-way. It's basically at the end of a hammerhead cul-de-sac. This is a typical request that we get each year. And here is a sketch, a more accurate sketch of the area to be vacated. It also shows some of the improvements that are in there, such as the catch basin and everything that will be addressed by the applicants once this is approved. All right, so we analyze this under Section 3.4.5B. Basically, the city has a stormwater pipe in our right-of-way there. However, all easements underlying this right-of-way are going to remain. The applicants have agreed to remove the existing pavement, sod this area, and extend the drainage pipe, and construct a new catch basin in the right-of-way. The easements underlying this right-of-way are going to remain, so the city will also be retaining a six-foot wide public utility and drainage easements around each expanded site. So once that's vacated, that would be split between the two adjacent property owners. The cul-de-sac itself will not be impacted by the vacation requests, so no alternate routes will be required, so this shouldn't have any adverse impacts to the surrounding area. Again, it won't impede the ability of vehicles to turn around and exit the area using that cul-de-sac, and we did receive three utility provider letters stating no objection. So the Planning Division recommends approval of the requested vacations, as well as the hearing examiner with the conditions outlined in the hex recommendation. And I stand by if you have any questions.
Okay, and I'll open up public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak on Resolution 158-23, please come forward. Seeing none, public hearing is now closed. Is there a motion for Resolution 158-23?
Motion to approve.
Again, is there any council discussion? Seeing none, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Cummings?
Cummings? Yes, I know, I'm trying to think here real quick. Yes.
Gunter?
Aye.
Hayden?
Aye.
Long?
Aye.
Shepherd?
Aye.
Steinke?
Abstain.
May I defer to the city attorney?
I think I know what your voting conflict is, but you need to state it on the record right now, and then what's going to happen is you'll have to fill out a form, a conflict form, but I believe the applicant may be your employer?
No, the applicant is my customer.
Oh, okay. Basically, the same thing, he's paying for you. I mean, he is, he is a intricate part of your employment, your customer.
I will receive no further gain, although I was involved in their transaction to build the home that they're looking to build.
But you're not going to get a, no special gain or loss is coming to you because of this action?
No.
And you don't have a voting conflict? If you're going to get the same salary you're going to get everything else, you don't have a voting conflict?
Okay.
So you can vote on it.
Then I would vote aye.
Welsh?
Aye.
Seven ayes, motion carried.
Okay, thank you. We'll move on to Ordinance 45-23. Madam City Clerk, please read the title.
Ordinance 45-23, an ordinance amending Ordinance 71-03 as amended by Ordinance 141-04 and Ordinance 6-15, approving a planned development project in the city of Cape Coral, Florida entitled Sunset Lakes, also known as Coral Lake subdivision, for certain property described as a tract or parcel of land situated in the state of Florida, County of Lee, city of Cape Coral, lying in Section 30, Township 43 South, Range 24 East, and being more particularly described as the platted subdivision of Coral Lakes, recorded in Plat Book 80 at pages 12 through 28 of the Public Records of Lee County, Florida, and specifically amending the Sunset Lakes Plan Development Project for two properties identified as tract C-2 and tract A-7, as depicted in the platted subdivision of Coral Lakes, recorded in Plat Book 80 at page 13 of the Public Records of Lee County, Florida, by approving the modification of conditions in Ordinance 71-03 to remove any obligation to install a traffic signal at the intersection of Del Prado Boulevard and the north entrance to Sunset Lakes, to remove traffic monitoring requirements, to remove any obligation to install a roadway connection between the subject property and the Sunset Lakes development, to allow development of the applicant's property consistent with the industrial zoning district as further provided, providing for findings of fact and conclusions of law, providing for action on request and conditions of approval, providing for legal effect and limitations on this PDP development order and administrative requirements, providing severability and an effective date.
This is a quasi judicial hearing. Anyone wishing to speak or provide testimony must be sworn in.
Please raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear or affirm to tell the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
I'll turn it over to staff first.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Again, thank you for your patience in that last presentation. This one will be much less winded, and let's get to it. This is Ordinance 4523. This is a PDP amendment for a subdivision known as Coral Lakes, formerly known as Sunset Lakes. The applicant, or, excuse me, the property owner owns two pieces of land within that PDP. They're being represented by Mr. Mazurkowitz and Mr. Mastrick. The request is a PDP amendment. The location is tract- and Mr. Mastrick. The request is a PDP amendment. The location is tract C two and A seven within the Coral Lake subdivision. Those are depicted on screen before you. They're located in northeast Cape Coral. Tract A seven is rectangular, and tract C two is a little more regularly shaped. The map on the left shows you the full extent of the Coral Lakes PDP. The subject parcels are zoned industrial and have an industrial future land use designation. In two thousand and three, the Coral Lakes PDP was approved as a mixed-use and industrial development PDP. That PDP was titled Sunset Lakes and approved two multifamily tracts, a single-family tract and a commercial tract, and one industrial tract, and one more community recreational tract. The future land use of the applicant's property has been industrial since nineteen eighty-nine, and the zoning of the applicant's property has been industrial since the passage of Ordinance seventy-one oh-three, which approved that PDP. The original master concept plan limited development on tract C two to outdoor storage and an undetermined amount, and one hundred and fifty thousand square feet of mini warehouse buildings. One of the applicant's requests is to remove that restriction to allow development on this property with uses and densities consistent with the I-one zoning district. The original plan also included a, two roadway, two road connections I'd like to discuss. One, in red, that linked the tract five, which is, I'm going to just refer to as the Baker Brothers parcel, with tract four, which was going to be a commercial development section of Coral Lakes. And I've depicted that road on screen in red. Another is an east-west connection that ran along the entirety of tract A seven. I've depicted that in blue. The applicant has requested from the city to remove the roadway interconnection between the applicant's property and the Coral Lakes commercial tract. That's the property in red. That's the red line. To relieve, the applicant has also requested to relieve the applicant from Ordinance seventy-one oh-three's condition N three, which required the developers together to provide a traffic signal at the intersection of Del Prado and the north entrance to Coral Lakes, as the applicant will no longer contribute any vehicular trip to that north entrance due to the removal of that road connection. Another request is to relieve them from requirements in Ordinance seventy-one oh-three, which required annual traffic monitoring reports, again, as the Baker Brothers parcel will no longer connect to that PDP, and to remove the use restrictions to allow the development of the applicant's property with uses allowed in the industrial zoning district. Conclude, staff has some conclusions and recommendations. Staff concurs, the interconnection of the subject property with the Coral Lakes development to the northeast tract five is not necessary. Again, that's the red road. That trips generated from the applicant's property will travel through the existing North Cape Industrial Park, which abuts immediately to the west, rather than routing any industrial traffic through Coral Lakes. With no vehicular impact towards the community, the applicant should not be required to contribute towards monitoring reports or future signalization, if any is required. The existing sixty-foot wide cross-access easements running along tract A seven, the blue road, remain necessary for the city's future transportation needs and are not proposed to be vacated. The proposed amendment met the LDC requirements and complied with the city's comprehensive plan, generally. Following the Hearing Examiner's review on April eighteenth, the Hearing Examiner recommended approval with staff's conditions, but further recommended additional limitations on the uses that could be allowed on the property. Staff removed one of the Hearing Examiner's recommended use restrictions from your development order in front of you. That was for major vehicle repair. Staff concurred with the Hearing Examiner's recommendation, and there's a number of citizens that were speaking at HECs toward, against that particular use. The Hearing Examiner further recommended restricting the uses of a vehicle fueling station, a repair shop, light industrial, and heavy industrial. Staff did not concur with those and did not remove those from, did not restrict those in the ordinance before you. Staff is recommending approval of Ordinance forty-five twenty-three. We received one call prior to council for information, and I received two calls in opposition of this case. I'll stand by for any questions, sir.
Thank you. I know, open up public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak on Ordinance forty-five dash twenty-three, please come forward.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Joe Mazurkowitz, President of BJM Consulting, here on behalf of the Baker Brothers LLC, the owners and applicant. Just very quickly, staff did a very nice job making this presentation. We agree with just about ninety, ninety percent of it, just one issue we don't. But the history is, since in two thousand and three, I represented the original developer and got the original PDP for Sunset Lakes, now Coral Lakes. I thought I would give you some, some philosophy as to why it was interconnected the way it was. Sunset Lakes was determined or developed to be a full-service live-work-play, everything in the community. And the interconnectivity between this industrial piece to the rest of the community was to facilitate trips to their storage, inside and outside storage. That's why the use was limited to those two, because that was the intent of it. Since that is no longer wanted, and the actual use of the commercial, thirty-five-acre commercial tract has changed along Del Prado, we believe that the road is no longer necessary, and it actually makes more sense to have this site interconnected with the North Cape Industrial Park to its west. We also agree with staff's recommendations of the limitations of the uses, just taking out that one the Hearing Examiner did take out. Some folks in, at the P&amp;Z hearing did object to that use. We don't contemplate that use being on this site anyway. But when you have a, a piece of property that has land use and, and zoning, since two thousand and three for industrial, to remove light industrial and heavy industrial from the uses on a piece that's owned industrial is kind of like counterintuitive. And we just don't, we agree with staff, and we, those issues need to be, those uses need to maintain. Our only point of objection between the Hearing Examiner staff and what we originally asked for is the extension of the east-west roadway where you would connect Academic Village to the North Cape Industrial Park. The original PDP did have a, an easement in place. Unfortunately, nobody ever recorded the easement. The city never recorded the easement for transportation across the site. When the Bakers bought the property, they had no, no notice that that easement, that easement existed. They paid for that, that right-of-way, that what you thought was right-of-way, or what you would love to escape right-of-way. And talking to staff, they say, listen, we don't want to take, we don't want to take that away now because we'll have to buy it from them. Well, my point is, that's not fair. You made a mistake. You didn't record your easement. You got to pay for it, if you want it. That's if you want it. On a common sense approach, not a transportation and planning person, but a common sense approach, the extension of that roadway from Academic Village to the North Cape Industrial Park doesn't make any sense. If you've driven into North Cape Industrial Park any time since it's been in place, when you go on the extension of Andalusia north of Kismet, that road is covered with parked vehicles loading and unloading, servicing the industrial uses on each side of it. It's not going to take the additional trips. And why on earth you want to take the industrial trips from North Cape Industrial Park and run them through your new Academic Village site makes no sense either. I understand the if come maybe so, we'd like to save it forever, but you can't take private property that way. And if come maybe so, you would love to have it for future needs. That's what staff just reported to you on the, on the record tonight. Well, if you want to have it for future needs, you got to pay for it. It makes no sense. It looks good on paper, but if you just experienced the configuration of parking and loading and unloading along Andalusia and the adjoining roads in North Cape Industrial Park, you would clearly understand it is not available to, through traffic. If you are considering to leave that in, I would have hoped you would all have visited that road at some time and see what you're connecting to. I understand from a train, a transportation perspective, that the interconnectivity to the North Cape Industrial Park, going west and south to Kismet, or, or going east to Del Prado, takes trips away from the Kismet-Del Prado intersection. I get that. It only do it if people will use it. The type of trip, trips going through Academic Village are not going to go around this way to avoid that light at Del Prado and Kismet. If you absolutely believe you want to do it, then I ask you, fine, buy the right-of-way. You should have recorded your transportation easement in two thousand and three. You didn't. The new owner had no notice, and it's almost immoral to take it from him now, by holding him hostage because he wants to take the other uses off of his property so he can really develop a true industrial piece adjacent to the North Cape Industrial Park. I ask you with all sincerity, do what's right, do what is important and morally right to this owner. Do not take his property because you can't. And if you exercise this easement tonight, it's only because you can. And that's not the right way to do business. I respectfully request you pass the ordinance as presented, with the exception of maintaining the east-west easement over the entire, over the entirety of tract A seven. Thank you.
Thank you.
If, Mr. Mayor, if you don't mind, I did prepare two extra slides in case this came up tonight. Again, what Mr. Mazurkowitz is depicting, is describing tract A seven, that was that road we discussed that's in blue, that the city wants to retain its right of ingress and egress over, which was platted, and we have. The bigger picture of this is the city's plan to connect both our industrial park, the Baker Brothers, and more through the Academic Village, AKA Del Prado Point Project, via a right-of-way that will connect to Del Prado, and then connect to the existing industrial park to a already acquired right-of-way that we've obtained for the extension of Andalusia along the west side of Coral Lakes, and a piece, the missing piece of the Andalusia right-of-way that the city is in communication with, with the landowner in that industrial park, which I've depicted in red. Together, these will provide a potential new roadway interconnection that the city believes to be valuable. I have brought someone from transportation here if you'd like to discuss this transportation topic a little further on the record. Thank you for the opportunity to add those last slides.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak during public hearing? Seeing none, public hearing is now closed. There's a motion for Ordinance forty-five dash twenty-three?
Motion, motion to approve?
Second.
Okay. Councilmember Welsh?
Just so I get this correct, the motion that I made to approve is with the city's recommendations, keeping that blue line as you depicted at the end there. It's not, it's not what Mr. Mazurkowitz was asking. Okay, thank you.
Any other discussion? Councilmember Cummings?
Yes, I had a question for Joe real quick. In this piece of area, you are saying that this is owned by the owner, correct?
Tract A seven, yes, is owned by the Baker Brothers LLC.
And is he going to make it an easier access for people coming in and out?
He'll have to use part of it to get access. It lines up with the, with the road in North Cape Industrial Park. I think it's northeast twenty-eighth. He would use part of that to get access to his property, absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, we have a motion second on the floor. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Cummings?
Yes.
Gunter?
Aye.
Hayden?
Aye.
Long?
Aye.
Shepherd?
Aye.
Steinke?
Aye.
Welsh?
Aye.
Seven ayes, motion carried.
Okay, we'll move on to Ordinance fifty-three dash twenty-three. Madam City Clerk, please read the title.
Ordinance fifty-three dash twenty-three, an ordinance amending the city of Cape Coral official zoning district map of all property within the limits of the city of Cape Coral by rezoning property described as parcels of land lying in the northwest one-quarter of Section twenty, township forty-four south, range twenty-three east, Lee County, Florida, as more particularly described herein. From agricultural, a Lee County designation, to commercial corridor zone, property is located at twenty-eight ten through three thousand southwest Pine Island Road, providing severability and an effective date.
Again, this is a quasi judicial hearing. Anyone wishing to speak or provide testimony must be sworn in.
Please raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear or affirm to tell the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
All right. Good evening, Mayor, City Council. For the record, Chad Boyko, Principal Planner with the city's Plan Division. This is Ordinance fifty-three dash twenty-three. This is a privately-initiated rezoning case. You have two applicants for this. You have Haunch LLC, and then you also have Lee Memorial Health System. This is located south of Pine Island Road and a little east of Veterans Parkway, that intersection there. You're looking at just under forty-two acres in size. The site does have access to city utilities, except for the fact that the Greater Pine Island Water Association does still hold service rights over this piece of property. And this is a rezone from a Lee County designation to the city's designation of commercial corridor. This is the third step in the entitlement process that parcels go through when they get annexed within to the city of Cape Coral. This, the annexation for this was approved late last year. Earlier this year, you approved a future land use map on these properties that brought them into the Pine Island Road District classification. And this is the third and final step for land use and zoning entitlements for this piece of property to have this rezone, to have this property rezone to commercial corridor. The surrounding development of, on all the sides of the property is to the south, you have the royalty subdivision, which is still within unincorporated Lee County. To the, to the east, you have the combination of the Coralina Apartments and Sanval Residential Units. To the west, you have some properties that are still within unincorporated Lee County. And then to the north, you have a combination of a piece of property that is being converted from a storage facility to some multifamily units. You have the public shopping center at Coral Shores, and you have some undeveloped property also to the north across Pine Island Road. The existing zoning, as you can see in the map on your left-hand side, is currently unincorporated Lee County zoning. That's why it's indicated in the gray. Surrounding zoning is unincorporated Lee County to the south, to the west, and then to the north and to the east, you have the commercial corridor zoning. And then the map on your right shows the proposed zoning of commercial, of commercial corridor being brought onto these parcels. We mentioned that it's a little over forty-one acres in size. There is one of these parcels that is currently developed. They are, they have a contractor business on that piece of property. It's owned by the Haunch Company. The other four pieces of property are undeveloped. We mentioned that it's been annexed in the Cape Coral recently, and the land was changed to the Pine Island Road District lately. And we talked about this being the third step as well. We looked at this and we analyzed this per our land development code. There's a couple of sta, there's a few standards in there that talk about consistency and whether or not it would be appropriate for this area. Staff finds that the proposed district is consistent with this area. The uses that are allowed within the commercial corridor district are similar to what you see all along Pine Island Road, which is what it was intended for, to have multifamily, mixed-use, retail, some light industrial. You'll see all of those uses that are allowed within this commercial corridor, and it will still be placed upon this. The commercial corridor would not allow for any single-family homes or duplexes in this area. The site is an assemblage of acres between the two owners, totaling forty-one acres in size, which is, which is a pretty sizable assemblage that you see, see if you have coral. And other than the commercial corridor district, there is only one other district that could be placed upon this property to make it consistent with Pine Island Road District, and that would be to have a planned unit development be approved for this piece of property. We also analyzed this per our comprehensive plan with the corridor citing criteria, and it meets two out of the four citing criteria. There are a couple of policies that don't necessarily apply to this because you still have some land that's adjacent that is within unincorporated Lee County. So staff finds that it hits the majority of the citing criteria. We recommend approval of the rezone. We recommend approval of the rezone to the commercial corridor district, and the hearing examiner also recommends approval of this ordinance, and I'm here for any further questions.
Okay, thank you. I'll now open up public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak on Ordinance 53-23, please come forward.
Christine Fisher. I'm with Johnson Engineering, and I'm representing the applicants for this particular rezoning application. This should look familiar to you. We have been before you a couple of times for other aspects of this. So this is about 42-acre site located, it's actually 2810 to 3000 southwest Pine Island Road. Two parcels are owned by Lee Memorial Health Services, and three are owned by Haunch. It's within the urban services area, transition area. In November of last year, you approved the annexation for it. It was a voluntary annexation. And then in March of this year, the Pine Island Road District balloon designation was The hearing examiner also reviewed this one in May. As you know, annexed lands, when they come into jurisdiction, the state requires that they maintain the Lee County future land use and zoning designations until such time as the jurisdiction assigns those to the property. So that's what we're here to do today, to assign some zoning to it in the city's jurisdiction. As you can see, the property is mostly undeveloped, but we do have that construction office and outdoor storage. That is a Haunch property. It's a small construction office. It's been in existence as that used since 2003. Surrounding parcels include vacant, single-family, multifamily, commercial, the storage, which was across Pine Island that is now changing, and gas station. Here you can see the Lee County zoning map, and then the Cape Coral zoning map. As you can see, this stretch of the corridors is CC, commercial corridor. So that is the appropriate zoning designation for properties along southwest Pine Island I won't belabor the consistency criteria. Chad did an amazing job going through that. It is surrounded on four sides by right-of-way, so it does not abut other zoning districts. But across those right-of-ways, you've got CC to the north and east, and then further It meets these criteria. That's 1,500 square feet approximately of frontage along southwest Pine Island Road corridor as well. It also continues that desired CC along the Pine Island Road area. The range of uses that are allowed in the CC is consistent with what's in the area, both proposed and existing. It does serve a community need, whether it be mixed use or commercial that ends up on these properties. Ultimately, it fills that need within the city and that area. It is the only proposed conventional zoning district that's allowed in the PIRD, and it's large enough to support those kind of permitted uses, either as one unified project or as multiple projects, since we have different property owners. And then we believe it supports the goals, objectives, and policies within the comprehensive plan. It's compatible with development pattern around it. It's consistent with the Pine Island Road District Master Plan, and it prepares the city for future growth. The hearing examiner issued a recommendation on May 18th to recommend approval to City Council of the requested rezoning, and we're requesting that City Council approve it as well, as recommended by staff. And if you have any questions, I'm available. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak during the public hearing for Ordinance 53-23? Seeing none, public hearing is now closed. Is there a motion to...
Motion to approve.
Any council discussion? Seeing none, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Cummings?
Aye.
Gunter?
Aye.
Hayden?
Aye.
Long?
Aye.
Shepherd?
Aye.
Steinke?
Aye.
Welsh?
Aye.
Seven ayes, motion carried.
Okay, we'll move on to Item 10B, Legislative Public Hearings. There is a time restriction on these presentations, five minutes for the city staff, five minutes for the applicant, and three minutes for any input, public input. We'll move on to ordinance. The first one is Ordinance 50-23. Madam City Clerk, please read the title.
Ordinance 50-23, an ordinance amending the City of Cape Coral comprehensive plan by amending the future land use map from multifamily residential to commercial slash professional land use for property described as lots 25 through 60, block 2219, lots 17 through 40, block 2221, lots 1 through 66, block 2220, and lots 1 through 68, block 2211, all located in Unit 33 Cape Coral subdivision. Property located at 1902 through 2098 Diplomat Parkway East, 2101 through 2219 Diplomat Parkway East, 2102 through 2354 Diplomat Parkway East, and 2305 through 2351 Diplomat Parkway East, providing severability and an effective date.
I'll turn it over to staff first.
Good evening again. Justin Heller, Senior Planner with Cape Coral Planning Division. This is a city-initiated future land use change. This is for about 140 parcels totaling 14.6 acres up in northeast Cape Coral, from multifamily to commercial-professional, to allow new commercial development to occur in these blocks. Currently, the inconsistent zoning and future land use makes these lots undevelopable. So the proposed changes will bring consistency between the zoning and future land use. Currently, there's only one improved parcel that has a church on it, and these parcels are pretty small in size, the smallest being a little over 3,000 square feet, on up to a slightly larger one that's been assembled around 26,000 square feet. So here's the map showing the location of the properties off of Diplomat Parkway there. And this is just our existing and proposed future land use maps. All right, so we analyzed this with our comprehensive plan. We found that the proposed amendment meets three of our commercial sitting guidelines, partially meets two, and doesn't meet three. Policy 1.14 doesn't really require a proposed amendment to meet a certain threshold of guidelines for approval or denial, rather, these guidelines are meant to provide compatibility analysis. So based on the above analysis, we find the properties, while not the most optimal, would be suitable for commercial development on these sites. Our impact analysis summary, that build-out, basically, this amendment would potentially result in a small increase in water and sewer demand, increases in solid waste services, and an increase in the number of trip hours generated. In summary, the amendment, again, will bring consistency between the future land use and zoning, allowing the property owners to move forward with developing their properties. Staff does recommend approval, and the Planning and Zoning Commission also recommends approval of the small-scale future land use map amendment. I stand by for any questions.
Okay, thank you. I now open up public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak? Would an Ordinance 50-23 please come forward? Seeing none, public hearing is now closed. Is there a motion to approve Ordinance 50-23?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any council discussion? Seeing none, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Cummings?
Aye.
Gunter?
Aye.
Hayden?
Aye.
Long?
Aye.
Shepherd?
Aye.
Steinke?
Aye.
Welsh?
Aye.
Seven ayes, motion carried.
Okay, move on to Ordinance 51-23. Madam City Clerk, please read the title.
Ordinance 51-23, an ordinance amending the City of Cape Coral comprehensive plan by amending the future land use map from mixed use to multifamily residential land use for property described as a tract or parcel of land situated in the state of Florida, county of Lee, city of Cape Coral, lying in the northeast quarter of Section 21 Township 43 South, Range 24 East, as more particularly described herein. Property located at the northeast corner of the intersection of Del Prado Boulevard and De Navara Parkway, providing severability and an effective date.
Okay, I'll turn it over to staff first.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. We received notice earlier from the applicant that they would like to continue this public hearing to a date certain. So if the applicant is here, they can provide any reasons that they want to, or you can schedule a date, time, and location for the next public hearing, and we can get that scheduled, and we can continue at that certain date.
Yeah, let's hear from the applicant.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Councilmembers. For the record, my name is Richard Aiken. I'm an attorney with Henderson Franklin. I'm here this evening on behalf of the applicant, which is Acorn Entrada. We would like to request a continuance to a date certain of August 16th, 2023. We have not previously requested a continuance of public hearing in this matter, and we note that Councilmember Cosin, who's not here tonight, this is in her district, and so that's one of our reasons.
Is that the reasoning for the continuance?
It is one of the reasons. The other reason is I think we've had some discussions with, and some further input, and we'd like to kind of take a second look at this and see if we can do anything different before the next public hearing.
Okay. All right. My understanding, Mr. City, I'm sorry, Mr. Deputy City Attorney, I got to open up public input first?
Correct. If anybody's here that cannot make it to the August 16th date certain, if they wish to speak, they do have the opportunity to speak today. However, if they can make it, they should probably wait till the full presentation is made.
Okay. So at this time, I'll open up the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak on Ordinance 51-23, please come forward. And my understanding, I got to leave that open, or can I close it?
You continue, if there is going to be a motion to continue, it stays open until August 16th.
Okay. So do we have a motion to continue this Ordinance 51-23 until August the 16th, 2023?
Motion to continue.
If I may make one point, can we have the location provided?
Well, it's going to be at the City Council chambers.
Yes, there's an advertising thing. If we state the date, time, and location of the continuance hearing, then the applicant will have to pay for re-advertising.
So the motion maker like to change his motion to incorporate here in council chambers?
Yes, a motion will include having the discussion on August 16th in Cape Coral City Council chambers.
Emended second.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll. I see you cringing.
Your honor, can I also have added to the motion the time of 4:30, the meeting start at 4:30?
I knew you were going to say that. I should have put it in there. So we will include the time as well, at 4:30 PM on August 16th.
Emended second.
Thank you very much.
It is Cape Coral, right?
It would still be Cape Coral.
All right, we have a motion to second. Hopefully, that satisfies everybody?
You got to understand, the reason why it's so specific now is that actually the state legislature finally did something correct, and they reversed a case that said you cannot do that anymore. So they have it now so specific that you have to put the date, time, and location.
And can we quote you on that comment?
Yeah, I appreciate the editorial comment there.
After January 31st. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Cummings?
Aye.
Gunter?
Aye.
Hayden?
Aye.
Long?
Aye.
Shepherd?
Aye.
Steinke?
Aye.
Welsh?
Aye.
Seven ayes, motion carried.
Okay, move on to Ordinance 39-23. Madam City Clerk, please read the title.
Ordinance 39-23, an ordinance amending the City of Cape Coral Code of Ordinances, Chapter 2, Administration, Article 6, Pensions, Division 1, Police Pensions, Amending Section 2-121.1, Definitions, Amending Section 2-121.4, Finances and Fund Management, Establishment and Operation of Fund, Amending Section 2-121.7, Death Benefits, Amending Section 2-121.10, Optional Forms of Benefits, Amending Section 2-121.16, Minimum Distribution of Benefits, Amending Section 2-121.30, Supplemental Benefit Component for Special Benefits, Chapter 185, Share Accounts, Providing for Severability and of Provisions, Repealing All Ordinances in Conflict Herewith, and Providing an Effective Date.
Okay, I'll turn it over to staff. Mr. City Manager, I don't see anybody at the podium.
No presentation on this one, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. All right. Is there any, I'll now open up public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak on Ordinance 39-23, please come forward. Seeing none, public hearing is now closed. Is there a motion to approve Ordinance 39-23?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Is there any council discussion? Seeing none, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Cummings?
Aye.
Gunter?
Aye.
Hayden?
Aye.
Long?
Aye.
Shepherd?
Aye.
Steinke?
Aye.
Welsh?
Aye.
Seven ayes, motion carried.
Okay, move on to Ordinance 47-23. Madam City Clerk, please read the title.
Ordinance 47-23, an ordinance amending the City of Cape Coral Land Development Code, Article 5, Development Standards, Chapter 2, Accessory Structures, Section 5.2.7, Fences and Walls, Regarding Concrete Fences and Walls Located in a Public Utility or Drainage Easement, Providing Severability and an Effective Date.
This particular ordinance is one I brought forward, but I'll wait till after the public hearing before I provide any information. The staff have any presentation? Okay. All right, I'll now open up public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak on Ordinance 47-23, please come forward. Seeing none, public hearings now close. Is there a motion to approve Ordinance 47-23?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Just real quickly, this was something that I had gotten a second on and worked on prior to 2019, before the Land Development Code had changed. This, to have masonry or concrete fences, was allowed throughout the city. When we did the new LDC changes, for some reason, that was withdrawn. The main reason that I thought it was important to bring this back is the magnitude of the fences that were damaged throughout the city. I just thought it was a little ridiculous not to allow masonry fences and concrete fences in the public utility easements, especially if a homeowner is willing to sign an agreement that if at any time any work needed to be performed within a public utility easement, it would be their responsibility to remove and to replace. So that's why I brought this particular ordinance forward. Councilmember Welsh?
Yeah, I'm okay with all of it. Just my question, and you'll know because you're a builder and I'm not, but engineered reinforced concrete with stucco means that it has to be stucco in order for you to concrete wall, or can they use another finish, like putting, say they wanted to put marble tile on it on the side, that wouldn't be...
Yeah, I mean, the previous, I wrote this particular ordinance identical to the one prior to 2019, and it only called for, you had the stucco. What they didn't want you to do is maybe to do, you know, pour, because you can form and pour a concrete wall, and then not stucco. So I think aesthetically, they were trying to make sure it was aesthetically pleasing, not saying you can't cover it, with some other type of substance this ordinance doesn't allow, other than the one that was part of 2019, something I guess we could have a discussion about.
Well, I'm guessing if someone wanted to do something different than stucco, they could come before council and request an amendment to this ordinance at that time being, but I don't see the point in investing any further time on it, because I do think that general building practice is concrete block with stucco. So just curious if that was brought up in any of the discussions. So, thank you.
You're welcome. Councilmember Shepherd?
Yeah, I just wanted to say I'm for this. I have a stucco concrete wall around my house. It's protected my home in storms. It's kept debris from flying to my house, and, you know, we have a lot of fences that flew around and did damage to other properties, so I think this is very good to let citizens have this option. Thank you.
Councilmembers, thank you.
Thank you. I'm in favor of the protective nature of the concrete block walls, and so in that light, I'm in favor of. One of the things that just concerns me a little bit is most all of the other materials that we look at allowing for fences, to some degree, take care of themselves. And I'm thinking of, if my neighbor puts up a concrete wall and it's stuccoed, typically the stucco is then painted, and certainly the paint itself and the stucco itself over time wears. On their side of the concrete wall, when they caulk their cracks and they paint their stucco, their side looks great. My side still doesn't. Should there be any requirement that if one chooses to put up this type of a fence that they're responsible for maintaining both sides of the material?
I think if you look at what we have now in place, let's talk about a vinyl fence. We all know some houses, mold will grow on vinyl fence. Me as an owner, I could just power wash my side right now and not even take a look at yours. I'm not saying that's the right way, but it doesn't matter if it's a concrete or a vinyl fence, we could do that practice today. That would be something I think that would have to be expanded upon in our code.
I think code enforcement would look at that as a deteriorating structure, and it would be on the property of the person who constructed that particular fence, so they would be cited and they would clean it. I don't have the exact wording of that language. I did code enforcement twenty-two years ago, but I think that it's still in existence that, you know, you still have to maintain your fences. That is a structure. Yeah, it's a property maintenance code.
Okay.
You could contact your neighbor and have him please clean it. If he doesn't clean it, you contact the city, and the city will go out and do a code enforcement.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, seeing no other questions, we have the motion second on the floor. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Cummings?
Aye.
Gunter?
Aye.
Hayden?
Aye.
Long?
Aye.
Shepherd?
Aye.
Steinke?
Aye.
Welsh?
Aye.
Seven ayes, motion carried.
Okay, move to resolution one-seventy-eight dash twenty-three. Madam City Clerk, please read the title.
Your Honor, I have fifty-nine twenty-three.
Oh, I'm sorry. I had that before until I turned the page. I guess I got ahead of myself, so we'll go ahead with yours. Ordinance fifty-nine twenty-three, please read the title.
Ordinance fifty-nine dash twenty-three, an ordinance approving a deed of transfer of slip credits to an identified qualifying receiving parcel from the City of Cape Coral, a Florida municipal corporation, to Scarlet Investments LLC, a Florida limited liability company, approving the deed of conservation easement and covenant limiting watercraft slips between the City of Cape Coral, a Florida municipal corporation, and Lee County, a political subdivision of the state of Florida, authorizing the mayor to execute the deed of transfer of slip credits to an identified qualifying receiving parcel and the deed of conservation easement and covenant limiting watercraft slips. Receiving parcel located at four fifty-eight Tudor Drive, providing for severability and an effective date.
Okay, we'll turn it over to staff. Looks like we have Ms. Andrews tonight.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council members. Dawn Andrews with the Public Works Property Management Division. Ordinance fifty-nine dash twenty-three approves the transfer, or is requesting you approve the transfer of twenty-two slip credits from the city's Serenia Vista Park to the Bimini Square project, which is located just west of Four Freedoms Park. Bimini Square is a proposed mixed-use project containing waterfront dining, retail space, professional office space, and residential units. The transfer of slip credits is subject to Lee County's approval. As a condition of Lee County's approval, the city is required to record a conservation easement, limiting the number of future slips at Serenia Vista Park to a maximum of ten slips, and I'll stand by for questions.
Okay, I'll now open public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak on ordinance fifty-nine twenty-three, please come forward. Nope. Okay. All right, seeing none, public hearings now closed. Is there a motion to approve ordinance fifty-nine twenty-three?
Motion to approve. Second.
Councilmember Welsh?
Yeah, just a quick question for staff. When we transfer these slip credits, do they still belong to the city of Cape Coral? Or are we giving up our slip credits?
So in the deed that we recorded on the property that it's going through, they're reserved in perpetual, for perpetual use for public use. So it's not like we're transferring them to them for private use. The owner and the staff that worked on this with them came to an agreement that these slips will always be available for public use.
Excellent. Just wanted to make that clear. Thank you.
Okay, I don't see any other comments. We have a motion second on the floor. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Cummings?
Aye.
Gunter?
Aye.
Hayden?
Aye.
Long?
Aye.
Shepherd?
Aye.
Steinke?
Aye.
Welsh?
Aye.
Seven ayes, motion carried.
Thank you.
Okay. Move on to ordinance one-seventy-eight dash twenty-three. Madam City Clerk, please read the title.
Resolution one-seventy-eight dash twenty-three, a resolution of the City of Cape Coral, Florida, relating to the city's provision of lot mowing services within lot mowing assessment areas, districts one, two, three, and four, for the fiscal year beginning October first, two thousand twenty-three, determining that certain real property will be specially benefited by the lot mowing services, establishing the terms and conditions of proposed special assessments to fund the lot mowing services, establishing a public hearing to consider imposition of the proposed special assessments and the method of their collection, directing the provision of notice and connection therewith, and providing an effective date.
Okay, I'll turn it over to staff. Mr. Mason, good evening.
Good evening, Mayor. Mark Mason, Financial Services Director. We just have one more thing to do here to get this thing to work. Of course, it didn't work. I got it.
You got all the confidence in the world with?
This doesn't count against my five minutes, does it? No. Apparently, it did. Tick-tock, tick-tock.
Okay, you got four and a half now.
So, all right, well, I'll be quick. This lot mowing program assessment's been in place for a long time. Lots on the program are mowed thirteen times a year. We have four districts, consist of all the vacant parcels in those four districts to which we mow and are not the responsibility of the property owner. They haven't taken the responsibility. As a reminder, the program begins in January, continues through November. It also includes pepper tree removal, as well as owl nest trimming. Owl nest trimming begins in May, continues through January, and the rates are calculated based upon its equivalent lot unit, which is five thousand square feet. Those that own two lots are charged two times the rate. So we have four lot mowing districts. The largest district is in District One, but it also has the least number of lots or vacant lots. We have District Two, Three, and Four that encompass the entire area north of Pine Island Road. For per equivalent unit, we have an increase of the, in all four of the districts, approximately forty-three cents, forty-five, forty-four, forty-five, and five, and forty-five for the last two districts. Overall, for both of the, if you have a two-lot site, the numbers are doubled, and it's an eighty-six cent increase for District One, and eighty-eight and ninety cents for Two, Three, and Four respectively. And I'm here for any questions.
Okay, now open up public input. Anyone wishing to speak on resolution one-seventy-eight dash twenty-three, please come forward. Seeing none, public input is now closed. Is there a motion to approve resolution one-seventy-eight dash twenty-three?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Is there any council discussion? Seeing none, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Cummings?
Aye.
Gunter?
Aye.
Hayden?
Aye.
Long?
Aye.
Shepherd?
Aye.
Steinke?
Aye.
Welsh?
Aye.
Seven ayes, motion carried.
Okay, move on to resolution one-seventy-nine dash twenty-three. Madam City Clerk, please read the title.
Resolution one-seventy-nine dash twenty-three, a resolution of the City of Cape Coral, Florida, relating to the city's provision of solid waste collection and disposal services, facilities and programs, establishing the estimated solid waste cost and assessment rates for the fiscal year beginning October first, two thousand twenty-three, directing the preparation of an assessment role, authorizing a public hearing to consider the adoption of the annual rate resolution, and providing an effective date.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. For solid waste assessment, the, just in summary, some of the things that have been requested, Waste Pro is requesting an eight-point-nine-eight percent increase. This includes the CPI, calculated and verified at four-point-eight-two percent, as well as the additional four-point-one-six percent that was withheld in two thousand twenty-two. Lee County Solid Waste Division has proposed three-point-six percent increases in disposal fees for all classes, and the residential and commercial collection rates will be set by the City Council on August thirtieth, two thousand twenty-three council meeting. And so when Lee County is proposing a three-point-six percent increase, this hasn't been adopted by the county yet, but is built into the rates as they exist today. Generally speaking, in the proposal, it's not going to go higher than what they've identified, but it could be less. As a reminder to the City Council, we went through a presentation at the June retreat and talked about solid waste rates. The fact that we have a contract that comes due in about four years, and solid waste rates are increasing throughout the state at an exponential rate, to the point where looking at our per pickup rate or per monthly rate is significantly lower than what new contracts are being let and happening out there in the marketplace. So one of the things that we proposed as part of that June retreat was that we create a glide path or an increase that would soften the blow by the time we get there. At the same time, it gives us an opportunity to set aside funds for any future hurricane as we just went through from a category-five hurricane and the level of debris that impacted us. Having a larger reserve on this for, which affects residential properties only, because we can't go pick up on the commercial properties, so it only affects the residential properties. We would actually utilize these excess resources that we are proposing that, to set up this reserve in the future, and then we get to a particular point, and when we let a new contract and we have new rates, they will likely be very close to what we're proposing on this sliding scale that's ever-increasing over time. When we get to that point, if there's excess resources, it allows us to then the set rates that will be probably more even over a period of time to buy down potentially any future rate increases that might occur because of the CPI. And with that said, the proposals that we have out there, we show you what the adopted rate was for fiscal year two thousand twenty-three to forty-eight ninety-five. That did have a reduction from collection surplus. We had done that for two years in a row. We don't have that this year based upon what we're projecting to try to do. And so we have a collection, if the City Council only goes with option A, which is the, with the four-point-eight-two percent CPI increase, which is associated with the contractual arrangement, then we would be looking at three-hundred-and-four dollars and thirty-seven cents difference, or, which is a difference of about fifty-two, sorry, fifty-six dollars on an annual basis. The largest share of this is the change in our operating personnel costs, and this is actually just setting aside the funds that we talked about and setting up the reserve for, in the future, for any debris that we may need as far as a hurricane is concerned. On option B, the change is an additional eight dollars associated with the additional four-point-one percent, one-point-six percent that Waste Pro was requested. The option is, when we, depending on what the City Council approves tonight, that's the amount that goes out. It's a not-to-exceed amount. It can't, we cannot change this in the future unless we go back out and notice everybody again. So this is, so whatever it is that we set tonight, this is what we'll notice the public with, and then we'll be back on August thirty to adopt the final. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. City Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We have, as you know, some pending litigation that we're working through. We've had several shade meetings. I think it would be appropriate to recommend option A at this point to the City Council.
Okay, so just want to make it perfectly clear. The resolution that is worded now is for option B, for the three-hundred-and-twelve dollars. So any motion that is made would have to not only pick the option, but I think should clarify exactly, and Mr. Mason, if you could put that dollar amount, I think it was three or four or something, if you could put that dollar amount up, if someone wants to make that particular motion, they should probably change, recommend changing that in the ordinance, or in the resolution, I'm sorry. So with that being said, is there a motion for resolution one-seventy-nine twenty-three? Madam City Clerk, see your light on.
Just a reminder to open the public hearing.
Oh, I'm sorry. First off, let's open up the public input. Anyone wishing to speak on resolution one-seventy-nine twenty-three, please come forward. Seeing none, public input's now closed. And is there a motion for resolution one-seventy-nine dash twenty-three? And then after that, I'll open up the...
I'll make a motion to adopt the proposed FY two thousand twenty-four with option A, with the total assessment per dwelling unit of three oh four thirty-seven.
Okay, do I have a second? I'll give you a second. All right, Councilmember Hayden?
Yeah, so we're just setting a not-exceed rate, so I'm just curious why A and not B.
We have, are working through a settlement agreement.
Right.
And we're not, at some point, that will come before you, but it's management's recommendation to go with A at this point.
All right, and it doesn't impact the settlement agreement?
A?
Yeah.
No.
Yeah, the only thing I'll say regarding this, I had a discussion with the city manager about this. One of the concerns that I had is, if my recollection serves me correctly, a majority of us, we'd had a discussion about that lookback. And if you read the contract, the existing contract, I know in the presentation, it says that Waste Pro is asking for that, but if you read the contract, they cannot even ask for that. In the contract, the only thing that they can ask for is CPI. That's it. There's nowhere in the contract as a lookback. They can't look back last year, hey, I didn't get it for the last three years. That's not even in the contract. So I had questioned the city manager about the presentation, because that's not even possible. It's not in the contract. So I'm glad we went with option A, because I wouldn't have supported the other one because of reading the Waste Pro contract. They can't even ask for that. Now, in litigation, that's a different story. Councilmember Steinke?
So just a question, and obviously, we can't speak on issues that are within litigation at this point, but just so I understand, what we are establishing is what we will include in what we charge?
It is what we will notice the public with as the assessment that will be on the tax bill in November. We cannot go, once this goes out, we cannot go above that amount. So that's the dollar value that will be associated with that amount.
So that will, so that will be, that will establish our revenue stream that will come with the thought that it would be used to support the Waste Pro contract that we have.
Correct.
And so while litigation goes on and there is no determination where that will end yet... yet, if in fact, what were to happen is, is we would be responsible to pay Waste Pro more than what we established tonight, that would create a shortfall in that particular line of our budget.
Interestingly enough, by doing the, what we're recommending in, in increasing the rate itself, that doesn't go to Waste Pro, it comes to us.
Correct.
You actually do have the resources if that were to come to pass. And then we would adjust next year's rates associated with whatever that is that we're doing this year. So, it, it is something that we would still, we would still collect for in, at some point, but by doing what we're doing today and providing this, this, this increase in rates to match a future contract, you will have the resources necessary to be able to cover that additional 4.16% if that is what's settled on as part of the litigation.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I think the other important thing, I know you weren't here, Councilmember Steinke, but just for some historical knowledge, you know, last year, at some point, Waste Pro will come back. In the contract, it says the maximum that they can get on a yearly basis is a CPI. Last year's CPI was eight point some percent. We didn't give them the whole eight point, it was four point something.
Right.
And that's why they're asking for the lookback for last year. But at some point, we'll have that discussion.
Thank you.
Regarding Waste Pro's contract, and we could give them the 4.82 or any number less than that, that this council collectively decides to give.
Thank you.
Okay, see no other lights on. Madam City Clerk, could you call the roll, please?
Cummings?
Aye.
Gunter?
Aye.
Hayden?
Aye.
Long?
Aye.
Shepherd?
Aye.
Steinke?
Aye.
Welsh? Seven ayes, motion carried.
Yeah, I think before we move any further, maybe we'll take a 10-minute break. Come back in 10 minutes.
Okay, I'd like to call the meeting back to order. Move on to Resolution 180-23. Madam City Clerk, please read the title.
Resolution 180-23, a resolution of the City of Cape Coral, Florida relating to the city's provision of fire protection services, facilities and programs, establishing the estimated fire protection assessed costs and assessment rates for the fiscal year beginning October 1st, 2023, directing the preparation of an assessment role, authorizing a public hearing to consider the adoption of the annual rate resolution and providing an effective date.
Mr. Mason.
Fire service assessment supports the fire fund in the fire department in the provision of fire services within the City of Cape Coral. In the past year, we funded that portion of the fire fund at 62% cost recovery and it yielded an assessment of $33.7 million. For fiscal year '24, in support of the proposed budget, we're recommending an increase of the fire service assessment from 62% cost recovery to 70% cost recovery. Overall, that change will yield an additional $13.5 million in support of the proposed budget. Overall, on the assessment itself, increase is $69.13, sorry, $69.13 and on an average lot, it's approximately a $100 increase. The overall total fire budget is approximately $69 million and so in this particular case, it's a realignment of resources in support of the fire fund as well as in support of the proposed budget.
Okay, thank you. I now open up public input. Anyone wishing to speak on Resolution 180-23, please come forward. Seeing none, public input is now closed. Is there a motion to approve Resolution 180-23?
Motion to approve.
Second. Any council discussion? Seeing none, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Cummings.
Aye.
Gunter.
Aye.
Hayden.
Aye.
Long.
Aye.
Shepherd.
Aye.
Steinke.
Aye.
Welsh.
Aye.
Seven ayes, motion carried.
We'll move on to Resolution 181-23. Madam City Clerk, please read the title.
Resolution 181-23, a resolution of the City of Cape Coral, Florida approving a stormwater fee for fiscal year 2023 to 2024 that exceeds the maximum amount established for fiscal year 2022 to 2023, and authorizing a public hearing and directing the provision of notice thereof, providing an effective date.
Mr. Mason.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, Mark Mason, Financial Services Director. Fiscal year 2024 stormwater assessments is being proposed at $142, which is a $7 increase from the fiscal year 2023 proposed, or the fire, sorry, the stormwater fee. As the City Council recall, we had a proposal, we did a stormwater fee study, which was presented to you on June 14th and further discussed at the June 15th retreat. Part of that, the overall discussion regarding the stormwater fees and the stormwater rate that's being recommended at $142 takes into account the need for additional staffing in order to keep up with the workload associated with swale regrading as well as maintenance within the stormwater system. And, you know, so the city code of ordinance requires an annual stormwater fee rate resolution in conjunction with our annual budget process. Today, you would adopt the not to exceed rate and then we would have a final public hearing on August 30th to adopt the final rate. Just as a little background on the stormwater system and a reminder, we have a little over 409 miles waterways, we have a little over 3,360 miles of swales, 24,000, over 24,000 storm drain inlets and 530 manholes, you know, that need to be maintained by the stormwater crews that, and the stormwater fee associated with the stormwater system. Stormwater operations has a multitude of different things that they do with catch basin, from catch basin replacement down to vacuum out the system as well as canal dredging and drain pipe relocation and swale regrading. Over the past year, there's quite a few things that have been accomplished within the stormwater system, but we're basically not, actually, we're not even keeping up with the system. We have a very large backlog of swale regrading, et cetera, that we need to meet head on with this adjustment and the provision of bringing on additional staffing for fiscal year 2024 in order to meet those, that, what we need to accomplish. We also have continual water quality projects that are necessary within the system as well as sewer improvements, also flooding prevention. This is a, seems to be something that has become more and more prevalent with the heavy rainstorms that we've seen over the past couple of years, and drain pipe improvements as well as debt support for doing the new UEP sections up in the north part of the city. Again, the recommendation is $142 per ERU. Again, this is the not to exceed amount and it'll be on the agenda, it'll be on the agenda for August 30th for final public hearing. I'm here for any questions.
Okay, thank you. I open up public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak on Resolution 181-23, please come forward. Seeing none, public hearing is now closed. Is there a motion to approve Resolution 181-23?
So moved. Second.
Any council discussion? Seeing none, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Cummings.
Aye.
Gunter.
Aye.
Hayden.
Aye.
Long.
Aye.
Shepherd.
Aye.
Steinke.
Aye.
Welsh.
Aye.
Seven ayes, motion carried.
We'll move on to Resolution 181-23. Madam City Clerk, please read the title.
Resolution 181-23, a resolution of the City of Cape Coral, Florida approving a stormwater fee for fiscal year 2023 to 2024 that exceeds the maximum amount established for fiscal year 2022 to 2023, and authorizing a public hearing and directing the provision of notice thereof, providing an effective date.
Mr. Mason.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, Mark Mason, Financial Services Director. Fiscal year 2024 stormwater assessments is being proposed at $142, which is a $7 increase from the fiscal year 2023 proposed, or the fire, sorry, the stormwater fee. As the City Council recall, we had a proposal, we did a stormwater fee study, which was presented to you on June 14th and further discussed at the June 15th retreat. Part of that, the overall discussion regarding the stormwater fees and the stormwater rate that's being recommended at $142 takes into account the need for additional staffing in order to keep up with the workload associated with swale regrading as well as maintenance within the stormwater system. And, you know, so the city code of ordinance requires an annual stormwater fee rate resolution in conjunction with our annual budget process. Today, you would adopt the not to exceed rate and then we would have a final public hearing on August 30th to adopt the final rate. Just as a little backup, background on the stormwater system and a reminder, we have a little over 409 miles waterways, we have a little over 3,360 miles of swales, 24,000, over 24,000 storm drain inlets and 530 manholes, you know, that need to be maintained by the stormwater crews that, and the stormwater fee associated with the stormwater system. Stormwater operations has a multitude of different things that they do with catch basin, from catch basin replacement down to vacuuming out the system as well as canal dredging and drain pipe relocation and swale regrading. The, over the past year, there's quite a few things that have been accomplished within the stormwater system, but we're basically not, actually, we're not even keeping up with the system. We have a very large backlog of swale regrading, et cetera, that we need to meet head on with this adjustment and the provision of bringing on additional staffing for fiscal year 2024 in order to meet those, that, what we need to accomplish. We also have continual water quality projects that are necessary within the system as well as sewer improvements, also flooding prevention. This is a, seems to be something that has become more and more prevalent with the heavy rainstorms that we've seen over the past couple of years, and drain pipe improvements as well as debt support for doing the new UEP sections up in the north part of the city. Again, the recommendation is $142 per ERU. Again, this is the not to exceed amount and it'll be on the agenda, it'll be on the agenda for August 30th for final public hearing. I'm here for any questions.
Okay, thank you. I open up public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak on Resolution 181-23, please come forward. Seeing none, public hearing is now closed. Is there a motion to approve Resolution 181-23?
So moved. Second.
Any council discussion? Seeing none, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Cummings.
Aye.
Gunter.
Aye.
Hayden.
Aye.
Long.
Aye.
Shepherd.
Aye.
Steinke.
Aye.
Welsh.
Aye.
Seven ayes, motion carried.
Okay, move on to Resolution 193-23. Madam City Clerk, please read the title.
Resolution 193-23, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Cape Coral, Florida authorizing the city manager to send a proposed millage rate of 5.3694 mils for general operating purposes, a rolled back millage rate of 4.7519 mils, and a proposed millage rate of 0.1675 mils for the park's voted debt service to the property appraiser for fiscal year 2024, setting public hearing dates, providing for notice pursuant to truth in millage regulations, and providing an effective date.
Thank you. Mr. Mason.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor, Mark Mason, Financial Services Director. The purpose of this particular item, this is the first step in the, in the long process of adopting the budget. We're required to set a millage rate, a preliminary or a proposed millage rate for, to be able to notice on the trim notices what the, what property taxes will, will be for property owners in the state of Florida. So required by statute, we're required to do it within a particular period of time from the time that the property appraiser office certifies the value to us. They certified the value to us on the 3rd of July and so the due date for this is August 4th in, for notice, for them to be able to get the information into the trim notices that will go out in August. The rate set is a not to exceed rate. Once we set this rate tonight, there's no going up, there's only going down. So make sure that, and then we'll be back on the public hearings to adopt the final rates. We have a, we have the first public hearing. This resolution also sets the time and the date for the first public hearing as well as the second, and the second public hearing will also be included. So as a reminder on ad valorem taxes, this does provide for the general operations of the city. As a, again, as a reminder for what ad valorem taxes are, we set the millage rate, the property appraiser tells you what the taxable value is, you multiply the two together and you get what the total ad valorem taxes are. It's also expressed in terms of rate per 1,000 in value. The reason why we tell people that is because it's different throughout the states. So if we have somebody that came in here from Texas, it's actually a percent, it's actually a rate per $100 versus $1,000. So it's just simply a different way of looking and getting to the same number. City manager's proposed budget has been developed utilizing the millage rate of 5.3694 for the general fund. This is the same millage rate as we currently have, it's 5.3694. City manager's proposed budget also has been developed utilizing a budget, a millage rate of .01675 for the obligation, general obligation bond for the park service debt. The, this is an increase from prior, prior years, but as a reminder, in prior years, we also bought down the debt from funds that were collected in advance previously. So the recommended not to exceed millage rate again is 5.3694 for the general fund operations. So just kind of give you an idea of what the numbers look like with the rollback rate, the adopted is, or the current adopted is 5.3694. If, at the rollback rate, we would see about a $300, a $300,000 increase and that has to do with the small portion of the growth that we, that we experienced during the past year. The proposed budget is 5.3694 so we would see, because of the overall value increase within the city, it would generate an additional $15.6 million that would take into account the growth that we have in the city as well as all things that are associated with the proposed budget and any new staffing in order to be able to continue with the, with the obligations of the city and the level of service that we continue to provide to the, to the residents. In addition, the maximum majority millage rate for fiscal year '24, again, would, in this particular case, because it, you, I don't think the City Council has actually seen this, but we have something called the maximum millage rate calculation that we have to do and there's different ways, different numbers, different millage rates that you would have at a maximum majority vote rate and if you had a higher rate than that, you would have to have a super majority vote and if you had a much higher rate, you would have to have 100% vote. It's just, we just tell you what the maximum majority vote millage rate is and it's the same as what the current millage rate is. In the same, at the same time, as I just briefly talked about with regard to the general obligation bond, in the past year, debt services, where debt services starting to increase with, and we still have one more tranche to go, but at the same time, over the last couple of years, based upon a .3 mils that we collected in 2021, we had excess revenues in the general obligation bond, so we bought down the debt service in the past few years. Now it's back to where it needs to be in order to meet the debt service obligation for fiscal year '23. Overall view of the general fund budget, this is kind of like just a quick preview for you. The proposed budget is for fiscal year 2024 is $225.2 million and it's approximately, I realize I'm going to go over the five minutes. It's approximately $9 million more than the fiscal year 2023 adopted budget. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I now open up public input. Anyone wishing to speak on Resolution 193-23? Seeing none, public input's now closed. Is there a motion to approve Resolution 193-23?
Motion to approve.
Second. Any council discussion? Seeing none, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Cummings.
Aye.
Gunter.
Aye.
Hayden.
Aye.
Long.
Aye.
Shepherd.
Aye.
Steinke.
Aye.
Welsh.
Aye.
Seven ayes, motion carried.
Okay, we'll move on to Resolution 181-23. Madam City Clerk, please read the title.
Resolution 181-23, a resolution of the City of Cape Coral, Florida approving a stormwater fee for fiscal year 2023 to 2024 that exceeds the maximum amount established for fiscal year 2022 to 2023, and authorizing a public hearing and directing the provision of notice thereof, providing an effective date.
Mr. Mason.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, Mark Mason, Financial Services Director. Fiscal year 2024 stormwater assessments is being proposed at $142, which is a $7 increase from the fiscal year 2023 proposed, or the, the fire, sorry, the stormwater fee. As the City Council recall, we had a proposal, we did a stormwater fee study, which was presented to you on June 14th and further discussed at the June 15th retreat. Part of that, the overall discussion regarding the stormwater fees and the stormwater rate that's being recommended, at $142, takes into account the need for additional staffing in order to keep up with the workload associated with swale regrading as well as maintenance within the, the, the stormwater system. And, you know, so the, the city code of ordinance requires an annual stormwater fee rate resolution in conjunction with our annual budget process. Today, you would, you would adopt the not to exceed rate and then we would have a final public hearing on August 30th to adopt the final rate. Just as a little backup, background on the stormwater system and a reminder, we have a little over 409 miles waterways, we have a little over 3,360 miles of swales, 24,000, over 24,000 storm drain inlets and 530 manholes, you know, that need to be maintained by the stormwater crews that, and the stormwater fee associated with the, the stormwater system. Stormwater operations has a multitude of different things that they do with catch basin, from catch basin replacement down to vacuuming out the system as well as canal dredging and drain pipe relocation and swale regrading. The, over the past year, there's quite a few things that have been accomplished within the stormwater system, but we're basically not, actually, we're not even keeping up with the system. We're, we have a very large backlog of swale regrading, et cetera, that we need to meet head on with this adjustment and the provision of bringing on additional staffing for fiscal year 2024 in order to meet those, that, what we need to accomplish. We also have continual water quality projects that are necessary within the system as well as, as well as sewer improvements, also flooding prevention. This is a, seems to be something that has become more and more prevalent with the heavy rainstorms that we've seen over the past couple of years, and drain pipe improvements as well as debt support for doing the new UEP sections up in, in the north part of the city. Again, the recommendation is $142 per ERU. Again, this is the not to exceed amount and it'll be on the agenda, it'll be on the agenda for August 30th for final public hearing. I'm here for any questions.
Okay, thank you. I open up public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak on Resolution 181-23, please come forward. Seeing none, public hearing is now closed. Is there a motion to approve Resolution 181-23?
So moved. Second.
Any council discussion? Seeing none, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Cummings.
Aye.
Gunter.
Aye.
Hayden.
Aye.
Long.
Aye.
Shepherd.
Aye.
Steinke.
Aye.
Welsh.
Aye.
Seven ayes, motion carried.
Okay, move on to Resolution 193-23. Madam City Clerk, please read the title.
Resolution 193-23, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Cape Coral, Florida authorizing the city manager to send a proposed millage rate of 5.3694 mils for general operating purposes, a rolled back millage rate of 4.7519 mils, and a proposed millage rate of 0.1675 mils for the park's voted debt service to the property appraiser for fiscal year 2024, setting public hearing dates, providing for notice pursuant to truth in millage regulations, and providing an effective date.
Thank you. Mr. Mason.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor, Mark Mason, Financial Services Director. The purpose of this particular item, this is the first step in the, in the long process of adopting the budget. In, we're required to set a millage rate, a preliminary or a proposed millage rate for, to be able to notice on the trim notices what the, what property taxes will, will be for property owners in the state of Florida. So required by statute, we're required to do it within a particular period of time from the time that the property appraiser office certifies the value to us. They certified the value to us on the 3rd of July and so the due date for this is August 4th in, for notice, for them to be able to get the information into the trim notices that will go out in August. The rate set is a not to exceed rate. Once we set this rate tonight, there's no going up, there's only going down. So make sure that, and then we'll be back on the public hearings to adopt the final rates. We have a, we have the first public hearing. This resolution also sets the time and the date for the first public hearing as well as the second, and the second public hearing will also be included. So as a reminder on ad valorem taxes, this does provide for the general operations of the city. As a, again, as a reminder for what ad valorem taxes are, we set the millage rate, the property appraiser tells you what the taxable value is, you multiply the two together and you get what the total ad valorem taxes are. It's also expressed in terms of rate per 1,000 in value. The reason why we tell people that is because it's different throughout the states. So if we have somebody that came in here from Texas, it's actually a percent, it's actually a rate per $100 versus $1,000. So it's just simply a different way of looking and getting to the same number. City manager's proposed budget has been developed utilizing the millage rate of 5.3694 for the general fund. This is the same millage rate as we currently have, it's 5.3694. City manager's proposed budget also has been developed utilizing a budget, a millage rate of .01675 for the obligation, general obligation bond for the park service debt. The, this is an increase from prior, prior years, but as a reminder, in prior years, we also bought down the debt from funds that were collected in advance previously. So the recommended not to exceed millage rate again is 5.3694 for the general fund operations. So just kind of give you an idea of what the numbers look like with the rollback rate, the adopted is, or the current adopted is 5.3694. If, at the rollback rate, we would see about a $300, a $300,000 increase and that has to do with the small portion of the growth that, that we, that we experienced during the past year. The proposed budget is 5.3694 so we would see, because of the overall value increase within the city, it would generate an additional $15.6 million that would take into account the growth that we have in the city as well as all things that are associated with the proposed budget and any new, new staffing in order to be able to continue with the, with the obligations of the city and the level of service that we continue to provide to the, to the residents. In addition, the maximum majority millage rate for fiscal year '24, again, would, in this particular case, because it, you, I, I don't think the City Council has actually seen this, but we have something called the maximum millage rate calculation that we have to do and there's different ways, different numbers, different millage rates that you would have at a maximum majority vote rate and if you had a higher rate than that, you would have to have a super majority vote and if you had a much higher rate, you would have to have 100% vote. It's just, we just tell you what the maximum majority vote millage rate is and it's the same as what the current millage rate is. In the same, at the same time, as I just briefly talked about with regard to the general obligation bond, in the past year, debt services, we're, debt services starting to increase with, and we still have one more tranche to go, but at the same time, over the last couple of years, based upon a .3 mils that we collected in 2021, we had excess revenues in the general obligation bond, so we bought down the debt service in the past few years. Now it's back to where it needs to be in order to meet the debt service obligation for fiscal year '23. Overall view of the general fund budget, this is kind of like just a quick preview for you. The proposed budget is for fiscal year 2024 is $225.2 million and it's approximately, I realize I'm going to go over the five minutes. It's approximately $9 million more than the fiscal year 2023 adopted budget. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I now open up public input. Anyone wishing to speak on Resolution 193-23?
Second.
Any council discussion? Seeing none, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Cummings.
Aye.
Gunter.
Aye.
Hayden.
Aye.
Long.
Aye.
Shepherd.
Aye.
Steinke.
Aye.
Will.
Aye.
Seven ayes, motion carried.
Okay, we'll move on to item ten C introductions, we have ordinance fifty-four dash twenty-three, Madam City Clerk, please read titles, set the public hearing date.
Ordinance fifty-four dash twenty-three, an ordinance amending the City of Cape Coral comprehensive plan by amending the future land use map from rural Lee County designation to Pine Island Road District land use, for property described as two parcels of land lying in the west one half of the northeast one quarter of the northwest one quarter of section twenty-one, Township forty-four, South Range twenty-three, East Lee County, Florida, said parcels of land being more particularly described herein, property located at twenty-one twenty and twenty-two hundred Southwest Pine Island Road, providing severability and an effective date. The public hearing will be August sixteenth, two thousand twenty-three.
Any discussion by staff or council? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to ordinance fifty-eight dash twenty-three, Madam City Clerk, please read the title, set the public hearing date.
Ordinance fifty-eight dash twenty-three, an ordinance amending the City of Cape Coral Code of Ordinances, Chapter nineteen, Water and Sewer Utilities, Article thirteen, Protection of Public Water System, regarding the protection against the backflow of water into the public water system, providing for type of protection, providing for frequency of inspection of protective device, providing for process waters, providing for marking safe and unsafe water lines, providing for penalties for noncompliance, providing severability and an effective date. The public hearing will be August sixteenth, two thousand twenty-three.
Any discussion by staff or council? Seeing none, we'll move on to ordinance sixty dash twenty-three, Madam City Clerk, please read the title, set the public hearing date.
Ordinance sixty dash twenty-three, an ordinance providing for the partial release of permanent easement within a portion of tract A, block twenty twenty-seven, Cape Coral, Unit thirty-one, as more particularly described herein, authorizing the mayor to execute a release of said easement, property located at fifteen eleven northeast Pine Island Road, providing severability and an effective date. The public hearing will be August second, two thousand twenty-three.
Any discussion by staff or council? Seeing none, we'll move on to ordinance sixty-three dash twenty-three, Madam City Clerk, please read title, set the public hearing date.
Ordinance sixty-three dash twenty-three, an ordinance approving the First Amendment to the lease agreement between the City of Cape Coral and PPW Cape Coral LLC for the lease of property owned by the City of Cape Coral at four hundred Santa Barbara Boulevard, known as Sun Splash Water Park, authorizing the mayor to execute the First Amendment, providing for severability and an effective date. The public hearing will be August sixteenth, two thousand twenty-three.
Any discussion by staff or council? Okay, seeing none, was that the last one, or we have sixty-three dash twenty-three?
Uh, next one is twenty-two twenty-three.
Okay, move on to ordinance twenty-two dash twenty-three, Madam City Clerk, please read title, set the public hearing date.
Ordinance twenty-two dash twenty-three, an ordinance approving the sale of municipal surplus real property described as parcels of land lying in sections thirty and thirty-one, Township forty-three, South Range twenty-four, East Lee County, Florida, and being more particularly described herein, containing approximately one hundred eighty point six five acres pursuant to section two dash one five five of the City of Cape Coral Code of Ordinances, authorizing and directing the mayor and clerk to execute a deed at closing conveying the aforementioned surplus real property to Cap Five Development LLC, property located at the northwest corner of Del Prado Boulevard and Kismet Parkway, providing severability and an effective date. The public hearing will be August sixteenth, two thousand twenty-three.
Any discussion by staff or council? Seeing none, we'll move on to item eleven, reports, Councilmember Steinke report.
Um, thank you, Mayor, on the twentieth, I attended the Southwest Florida League of Cities Monthly Meeting, a lot of great information shared there, a lot of progress being made by all the cities in our area in recovery and moving forward, and might add that our own mayor was elected treasurer for the following year for our Southwest Florida League of Cities. Attended the Chamber Mixer at the Museum of History on the same day, twenty-first, attended the Cape Coral Construction Industry Roundtable, they, that was put on by our Development Services and Economic Development Department, it was well-attended, and, and great conversation was had there, and certainly more of a team approach to meeting the needs of our, of our contractors, and, and the construction industry was, was furthered there, I believe. Twenty-fifth, I attended and acted as liaison for the Budget Review Committee as they do their work in reviewing the proposed budget, followed through with that again today, and, and last evening, attended the Cape Coral Republican Club Meeting where our Chief Lamb and Chief Seismore presented to a group, did a fabulous job, well-received, and certainly their work was acknowledged and appreciated there, and that has it for me.
Hey, thank you, Councilmember Welsh.
No report.
Councilmember Cummings.
Um, I don't have a report, but can I ask a question?
Sure.
Okay, great. So you guys were having a meeting on Monday, can I ask you how it went with the Budget Review Committee? Did you guys come up with a resolution or a game plan?
Yeah, I mean, I attended on Councilmember Steinke's behalf, since he couldn't be there, I know the city manager there as well. Basically, Bundy's meeting early on in the very beginning has kind of set the parameters for the Budget Review Committee, for the box for them to work in, we reiterated exactly what the ordinance stated that their function was and their responsibility, you know, a little bit of pushback there, but, you know, we told them that unless the ordinance changes by this council or a future council, that's exactly how we would move forward, and that's how staff would move forward. I explained to them whether they agree or disagree, or city staff agreed or disagreed, didn't really matter, we have to go by the ordinance and how it's specified. So we did that, the other recommendation that I made to the Budget Review Committee is any request for information must be made as a body, as a collective body. My recommendation was at the end of their meetings, to, and during the meeting, to take notes of maybe information that, as long as it fit within the criteria, the box that was established, they could ask staff for that particular information in a, in a motion. So at the end of the meeting, as a body, they could ask staff for that information through, through a motion, the recording secretary will give that information to staff, and they will provide the information that was requested. Additionally, I'd ask staff not only to disseminate that information to the Budget Review Committee, but to also give it to all of council. So we are always apprised of that information that the Budget Review Committee receives. I thought that would be an advantage for us, we're seeing the same information they're seeing. So I would say that was probably the first thirty minutes of the meeting, city manager spoke, pretty much reiterated the same thing, but I won't speak on his behalf, if you've got anything you'd like to, like to add to that, Mr. City Manager?
Yeah, I think, I think it was productive, you know, that, as the mayor said, there was a, some initial pushback, but, you know, we had, or I know I just reiterated that this is the same resolution that existed when, when you volunteered, it's not like council changed anything on them, other than to say, refocus back to what, you know, you originally signed up for, so, you know, there was some back and forth, some of the items out, like the nondiscretionary budget, or, I'm sorry, the non-departmental budget requests that get submitted, I let them know we don't do that anymore, and so they, they were already kind of looking for ways to possibly make recommendations to you all to, to make it more clear, so that it didn't say non-departmental, it said non-governmental, so, you know, from entities outside of the city, so I think they kind of understand, you know, where, where they were and where we are today, and I, my understanding, debriefing with staff from day-to-day, is that they're, they're adjusting, and, and they have made adjustments.
Okay, good.
Councilmember Steinke, I know you've been there for two days, so would you like to weigh in on?
Sure, I'll chime in a, a little bit, I think that both mayor and interim city manager did a good job setting the stage on Monday in my absence, I spent, you know, six hours, three hours yesterday and, and three hours this morning, they are holding themselves accountable to stay within that box, if someone gets out of bounds, they pull themselves back in, I'd say that both Nicole and Mark, in their involvement in those meetings, have been able to provide most all the information that would have normally been on a big laundry list to follow up on, and right in the meeting, they had the answers and satisfied the, you know, the concerns or the questions pretty pronto, if you will. Some did make it onto the list, and they followed the direction given to them on Monday that, that was put in the form of a motion that the entire committee agreed to, to be followed up on, city clerk puts that into a request for that information, and then it's brought back either the next meeting, or whatever's reasonable, might take a couple meetings based on when it comes up in the conversation, so I think, I think they understand, and there were a couple times where, as liaison, I said, are we talking operations here, are we talking budget? Because that's one of the areas that got, kind of got in the weeds, is it got into more of the operations of, of how the department was working that was causing the money to be spent that way, and, and that's not their job, and so certainly there are certain things where, if there's a rationale for why a certain number of police officers would be necessary, or where the, you know, if funding is coming in, you know, how, how many people is that for, how many years is that for, those questions came up, they got answered, and they moved on. So I, I, I think that they've made a, a pretty good improvement from concerns about history with them.
Councilmember Welsh.
I just wanted to state that the email that we got with the questions and the answers that you had forwarded on was a lot of extra information that I would have had to sit through, either the minutes or reading, so I, I enjoyed that and getting that email, so that, just thank you for adding that to the new Budget Review Committee, because sometimes in their report, when we get it the one time, a lot of that little stuff is missed, so it's, it's a good way for me to look at it as they're doing their meetings without actually having to attend it, so I appreciated that, thank you.
Yeah, and I, I think that's good, I think, you know, we get that information, and that at least puts us on equal playing field with them, we're getting the same information, so I, I thought that would be beneficial, and that's why I'd ask, so I'm glad it is.
And, and those questions are, are ones that I personally might not ask, so to, to see the questions and to get the answers was, was great, thank you.
Councilmember Cummings.
Yeah, so how do you feel overall, then, I mean, do you feel really good about this?
Well, for me, I've, I've only been there one day, I'll be there tomorrow, I know Councilmember Steinke's been there two days, you know, it's early on, I know there's still some pushback a little bit here and there, but, you know, we'll, we'll see how the process works.
Okay, you feel pretty confident they'll stay in that box?
I am pretty confident that staff will make sure that they stay in that box.
Okay.
Anything else that answer your questions?
Yeah, thank you.
Uh, Councilmember Steinke, get your.
I just think, I know where you're going, and I would tell you that the concept that if there's a concern, and there is some additional either documentation or information that's being requested, instead of one individual without the support of the rest of the committee saying, yes, that's something we should worry about, yes, that's something that's inside of the box, if it's just one person, that is eliminated, the, and, and, and that has been evidenced in going down a rabbit hole that shouldn't be gone down, and the other members of the committee said, that's not something that we should worry about, so that, that has evidenced itself, whether that will continue to evidence itself, we can only hope for, but at least the groundwork has been laid, and there's been evidence that they get it.
Great.
Get, get the information you were looking for.
Yeah, so if you guys are happy with the outcome of what you're seeing, then that's all I needed to know, I just was curious on how you guys felt about the, the Monday meeting, and if you guys got what you were looking for, then I will trust in all of you that we will move forward.
Yeah, like I said, I think it's a day-to-day, it's new this week, as long as we stay on the course that we're on, I think, I think hopefully they'll kind of self-please themselves, it sounds like they've been doing that the, the last few days, I really didn't see that in my meeting, but the first day was kind of setting the tone, so I'll be there tomorrow, because Councilmember Steinke cannot be there, so, you know.
What, what happens if, if they kind of rebel a little bit, and they don't stay in the box, and certain things continue?
Well, I think that we will make sure, I think staff will, I'm pretty, pretty confident Mr. Mason will keep them in the box, so I, I don't, I don't have a worry there, you know, the, the ordinance is fairly specific, this is the box, here's what you do, and I think that staff will make sure, and I know if I'm there as a liaison, and I'm sure Councilmember Steinke, if he's there, it's our job to make sure they stay in the box between staff and the council liaison, and my thing that, one of the things that I wanted to make sure is, you know, that nobody was going rogue in there, and, and I think that that's pretty evident in the past, but, you know, hopefully, hopefully that, we won't see that moving forward.
Okay.
And like always, we can address it if a, if a problem arises, but I know you had some concerns before, you know, we're just.
Well, yeah, well, it wasn't just me, I think the whole dais kind of basically stated that they all felt like it's been two years, I mean, I didn't even say that, some said two, some said three, that was continuously ongoing, so I just feel like, you know, what was the outcome, but if you guys are all happy, then, then we'll just keep it the way it is, but I just was just kind of curious on how it went on Monday, and if you feel confident that he will keep it in the box, then I, I don't see a, you know, I can't make the decision for everybody, you know, it, it takes a group of people to kind of come to the same, how do I say, agreement on what we've been witnessing, so, and I know there was agreement up here on the dais.
I don't think the consensus from last week changed to this week, but, you know, I think the, the rules of the game has changed.
Okay.
So maybe that'll help.
And if, if the council would like, I mean, we can, I can have my staff report to me, and then i, if it appears that certain members have not adjusted well, I mean, we can, I can certainly make you all aware of that, and you can, if that's what the request is, we can, I mean, there's different liaisons, so, or liaison could report out maybe once a week, I don't, whatever you all would like, we, we could let you know if we're, if they're struggling, or, or the liaison, I'm more than happy to have my staff provide an update once a week, once a day, whatever you.
Right, the only thing I will say about Monday's meeting, there was, Mr. Shadrack had brought some presentations that he had developed, you know, to the budget review, and, and Mr. Mason did point out that some of the information that was in the information, or, or his interpretation of the information was inaccurate, and, but I think, at any given time, Mr. Mason will make sure that he, he, he points out any inconsistencies or misinformation, that to me is the most important, I don't want misinformation given to the rest of the board.
That sounds like that's what's happening, if that's, if this continues.
So, if that continues, that could be a problem.
Yeah, I mean, so if you don't mind giving me some examples of what he was kind of putting out there, what I'm trying to figure out is how is this becoming misinformation when he's looking through it, and the numbers? and the numbers aren't accurate to what is being handed out in the budget?
Well, he has that opportunity. The one thing that I did also say on Monday is any information that he provides in that meeting, as soon as he puts it up on display, is public record information. He must provide a copy to the city clerk's office. I did follow up on Monday, I'm sorry, on Tuesday regarding my meeting on Monday, to make sure that the information that he displayed was given to the city clerk. So we make sure that we conform or comply to the public records laws that we have to. I know that did happen on Tuesday regarding the Monday information, and I'm sure, hopefully, that will continue, because we kind of set that tone on Monday as well, that any information, whether factual or not factual, any information that he provides has to be given to the city clerk's office for public records, and, and it'll be just that public record, so any of us could get that information at any time.
Okay. Does this take away, you know, because I'm not the liaison, so I apologize, Bill, but I just have some questions. Mark, does this take away a lot of time from you, knowing that you're on the clock, and there's a lot going on in the city, and you have a big department that you have to handle? Does this take time away from you to have to re-explain everything? I'm just trying to get a bigger feel of, of how this really works.
In general, when they're having a monthly meeting, it's usually two and a half, three hours. We don't normally have to prepare anything for those meetings. They usually interviewed or had meetings with various department heads who, you know, took the time to come in and explain what they do for a living. The, and, but at, at the same time, when we get into the budget period, it's usually a 10-day sprint to where we usually are there for about two and a half, three hours every day. And so that's, I mean, that's simply the time that it takes in order to, to, to work up and what, you know, for them to, you know, work through a 300-page document, you know, and for whatever recommendations they seem fit to make. So that's, and whatever additional time that we need to do, you know, if we've answered a question, and there's some, some follow-up, and they've agreed that they want further information associated with that, then, you know, we would actually spend, we would, of course, spend any time, you know, coming up with that information. However, I am, I'm, in, in this particular case, I'm very pleased with the idea of that when we're sharing this information with the, with the BRC, we're sharing it with you all at the same time. So you're getting the exact same information that they get. And, and that's, so from a time standpoint, that's what we do. If they weren't there, then we wouldn't, we'd be doing something else, but that's, you know, we'd still be working towards, you know, working with, and getting prepared to come in here and have, have meetings with you all to, to work through the budget. So that's how much time we spend with it. Right now, it's about a 10-day sprint in order to put together, and it's about two and a half hours a day. If there's anything else, I'm sorry.
No, I was just saying, I guess I'm trying to figure out a way to word this. You being the Finance Director, are, are you enjoying this? I mean, do you feel like this is, I mean, kind of, you know, do you feel...
All you have to do is read his facial expressions.
I just, I'm trying, I'm trying to figure out a good way of wording this.
I, I think it's probably important...
I mean, how, how are you feeling about all of this?
At 25 years of doing this, it's, it's, I mean, this is just, this is normal operations for me. But I should, should point out that, as the mayor kind of pointed out, you know, if there's a box that needs to be made, and, you know, it's either me or my staff that's going to be there. I'm not there for every single meeting, but I do have folks that are there. And, you know, so it's not, for the most part, it's not like I have, you know, multiple folks there. But I, it, it's important that the information that's being provided is accurate, and the, the information that they're working from, everybody understands it from the same, on the same level playing field. That's probably the most important thing that we can get across when we're, when we're working with, with the Budget Review Committee. We have several that have been on the Budget Review Committee for several years. They do understand how the city operates. It's usually a little bit wor, it's, it's, it, it works well. And for those that have not yet, you know, grasped the concept that we have 50 funds, and we have a, a lot of things going on here, it sometimes just takes a little longer, but that's okay. It would happen for anybody, when it really comes down to it. So I'm fine with it. It, you know, I, I'm very comfortable with it. I'm not sure that, I'm, I'm not sure exactly what you're asking me, but at the same time, well, I heard the question, so I know what you're asking me, but I'm fine with it.
Thank you.
Anything else?
For Councilman Stanky, you've gotten to know the, the committee pretty well, correct?
Yes.
How, how do you feel about the committee as a whole? I mean, I've met a few of them. They seem to be pretty decent. I mean, are you pretty happy with the board the way it stands?
The committee as a whole is well-intended. They want to provide service to the city in which they live. They feel that they can bring citizens' perspective and view to the comings and goings of dollars and cents. And like Mark said, it's a 300-plus-page document. I don't know if you've been through it all. There's loads of numbers in it. And in the course of the two days that I've been there, there's been a couple of spots where, where did this number go to that number? Oh, you know what? We need to fix that. So having a fresh set of eyes on it with well-intended people that are wanting to be contributory, not critical, and I think that's a key component, is, is that the, is that the objective is to be contributory to the process and have the process be more successful than had they not been involved. As long as that's the tone and the objective, we're in good shape. And, and so for, for them to understand the parameters within which they work, which has been extremely clear, made extremely clear, and for they themselves to share with themselves, hey, we're getting off track here. Hey, we need to stay within these parameters. Is that something that we all want to get more information on? Put that down so we have that in our request. They're operating the way they should. I think they're, they're contributing to the process. And in my opinion, I think, I think they should, if, if staying within the parameters, and if their objective is to be contributory and not critical.
Okay. Thank you.
Anything else before I go to Councilmember Welsh? Okay, Councilmember Welsh.
Just had a question for Councilwoman Cummings. Have you ever gone to a Budget Review Committee meeting?
I've watched them, and I've chosen not to, because when I have read the numerous emails that we receive, I've sit down in meetings and asked them to re-give me numbers. So I'm the type of person that I'm not going to go sit in something if it's inaccurate. I don't have that kind of time in my life. So I'd rather sit in a meeting that I can get factual information than I can move on. And now, now I'm not saying anything, we all make mistakes. That's not what I'm saying. I guess it's just the ongoing and with the inaccuracy, I guess, is what I'm saying, and not by the whole budget board is not what I'm pointing out here. I'm pointing out one specific person. So I just want to make that clear. One specific person...
What I'm going to say is I want to be clear as well, that we have to sit up here as an elected body and look at it as a board itself, which I believe is what Councilmember Stanky is doing, and not looking at it as any sort of personal issue with one member on the board. And I believe we all know that you have an issue with one member on the board, and I believe getting the reports and having them ask for questions is enough. So I don't, I don't know if the Budget Review Committee is videotaped. Is it? To where we could watch it later?
Not in the meetings I've been in.
Okay.
They're not videotaped.
So to say that you watched one and video...
Actually, there is...
Audio, you can't watch it.
Yeah, it's audio. Yeah, yeah.
Audio. I'm, I'm sorry, but when you said you watched one. But yes, so I, I think we need to let the committee do what they're doing. I think they're in the, going in the right direction. And I don't think we need to bring this up every week. Thank you.
Any other discussion?
Yeah, well, it's not so much the committee I'm looking at. I guess it's, it's one person. And I think, you know, trying to think of the best way of saying this. I, I think it's great that people take their, their time, because doing this is, is a lot, you know, thinking and, and reading and numbers, and no one enjoys that. So I just want to make this clear. I'm not looking at the whole committee here. I'm looking at the, the one person, you know. So, so I just want to make that clear with you. Okay? And me personally, it's trying to fix something that has been broke for a very long time. And I guess I can use the analogy, Mayor, you own a business, and you bring someone in to overlook at your numbers, and you have other people that work for you, and this person continues on telling your staff that your numbers are always wrong, numbers are wrong, numbers are wrong, continuously. Do you want to spend the time to have to re-explain to everybody, to your employees, that your numbers aren't off? This is the reason why. Or do we fix the problem and not have these issues anymore in your business? So I guess that's what I'm looking at. So...
Do you have a recommendation or a motion?
Well, I can make a motion if you would like. I mean, I can make a motion that we remove the Chair of the Budget Review Committee, and they can vote someone else in. I mean...
Is there a second to the motion? Anybody will make a second to that motion?
Second. So let's get on with it.
Is there any further discussion on, on the motion? Councilmember Stanky.
As liaison, I'll just chime in this far. This is my first budget cycle, so I don't know how the meetings have been run before, what the guidance has been given before, what parameters have been made clear before. All of the committees came before us with thoughts of making things clear, making adjustments. They've not been reviewed in a long time, and actions were taken. I've said before, I thought maybe that's throwing the baby out of the bath water. In this case, the Budget Review Committee remained, and those parameters were made extremely clear. The rules of engagement, if you will, were made very clear. Direction was given on how the meetings should be conducted and how requests for additional information would be provided. And so from the point where there was clarity given to how those meetings should be held, I've not seen anything egregious. And that's all that I can speak to, from my experience with the committee.
Can, can, can I make that motion, knowing it's part of the board with one person? I want to make sure, is that legal?
We already made a motion and a second. We got to, we got to, we got to address that one first. Councilmember Welsh?
Yes, thank you. As I was trying to state earlier, I don't believe that the issue lies within the misinformation that's apparently out there. I believe the issue is a personal issue between the Board Chair and the Councilwoman sitting next to me. So therefore, I cannot support this motion, because I don't believe, I don't believe in it. Thank you.
Mr. City Attorney?
There are forfeiture provisions within the Code of Ordinances 2-58. I'm assuming he has not... Forfeiture provisions within 2-58 of the Code of Ordinances. There is no discussion of him being unexcused. So all members of the Board Commissions, Task Forces, and other bodies appointed by City Council shall forfeit that office for cause if their member lacks any time during the term of the office, any qualification, violates any express prohibition of the office as imposed by City Council or law. So I guess that might be what you guys are talking about pursuant to the resolution that grant that established the Budget Review Committee. Then it goes on and says, "The forfeiture shall be effective only upon an affirmative vote of the City Council following notification to the appointee that the City Council is considering the action, and notification to the appointee of the specific matters to be considered by the City Council, and a hearing before the City Council if requested by the appointee." So I just wanted to let you know that that's the process. So any motion right now would be a motion to yes, do that. But notification would have to be given to the individual stating forth what he has specifically violated. And then if he requests a hearing, there'll be a hearing before you.
Thank you. Councilmember Long?
I had a different statement, but now I've got one related to that. That regards forfeiture, which in my opinion is different than removal. Is there not a provision that, a removal provision? I mean, it seems odd that we can, there's almost zero qualifications for our credentials to appoint someone, but yet there's a full-blown court process to remove that individual.
Right. And it goes on down at the very end. Subsection E, notwithstanding any provision within this code to the contrary, municipal board members, as defined in 112.501, which I don't have in front of me, shall be suspended or removed from office in accordance with the procedures provided in Florida statute, section 112.501, as may be amended from time to time. So I do not have that information with me.
Okay. That's it, I guess, for me. Procedurally, it sounds like there's not much that we can do moving forward with the motion that was presented. Is that, is that what you're saying?
Well...
As it was presented?
Maybe as it was presented, but, you know, it could be to follow the forfeiture procedure if he has violated any express prohibition of the office as imposed by the City Council or law. It would have, the motion should state what the actual violation is to provide him notice.
That's correct, and the statute reads the same way. I think we, we might have even copied and pasted the statute into the code. That's it for me.
So do we move forward with the, the roll call and the motion? I mean, to me, there's a motion and a second, so we have to move forward with, with that?
I think so.
Okay. And then after that, then we'll have to follow the procedure?
I, correct. I, I don't know if the motion has adequately expressed what the actual violation is to provide notice to him as to why he is being, why he has forfeited. Because you got to give him notice, and then he's going to be able to ask for a hearing. So...
Okay.
Due process, he needs to have some sort of idea as to what the charges are against him, as to why he is subject to this forfeiture proceeding.
Okay. So with that being said, do you want to continue with your motion?
No, I would like to take the motion back. I mean, if, if you feel, Councilman Stanky, you're the liaison, and everything's good, and he's in the box, and we don't have the problems like we were having, then...
All right, so the motion has been withdrawn. So is there any other discussion at this time? My suggestion, possibly Councilmember Cummings, get with the City Attorney's Office. I'm not saying you can't bring another motion forward later. Make sure we know exactly what the process is, how the motion has to be stated, what needs to be incorporated in the motion. So that would probably be my, my recommendation, if that's, if that's what the City Attorney is telling us. Honestly, I haven't looked at the code, so I'm, I'm not really sure.
Yeah, you know, that, that's fine. I'd be happy to, to meet with Councilmember Cummings. But if these Budget Review Committees have just commenced more, I guess, intensely now, and I don't know, I don't go to them, of course, but if... and I don't know, I don't go to them, of course, but if, if the council members that go there, and right now they're not seeing a big violation...
We're on day three of...
Right. There may be some in the future which would qualify to do the forfeiture after a few warnings. So I...
Okay.
Right now, from what I'm hearing, it could be very difficult to actually prove a violation pursuant to the ordinance based on what some of the council members have said tonight.
Okay.
Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I was left with kind of an open-ended question. And the answer to that open-ended question was, I believe Mr. Shadrack has received the message.
Okay. Like I said, I'm not here to create problems. It's just what we were seeing and people were talking and you literally have been going to these meetings and you guys sat in there and putting these together. That's why I said this is your board that you're liaison for. So if you feel very confident, then I support you with what you feel.
Well, I was in receipt of the same email that others were that had misinformation in it, that misinformation was addressed, the ramifications of providing misinformation on a broad-scale basis was addressed. And so my experience at this point, from the last two days that I spent there, was that message received, not only by Mr. Shadrack, but also by all the committee members that want to continue and want to be of service. And they are policing themselves to make sure they stay within the parameters that the mayor and the interim city manager made very clear on Monday. And with an occasional moving back inside the box, which any organization could be subject to, I think at this point, they're playing the game the way they're supposed to play the game. And if they don't, then we will certainly bring that to everyone's attention.
Thank you.
Councilmember Long?
Yeah, unrelated to the subject matter, but inadvertently because of the policy and the statute. Now, I'm curious. Mr. Bartosz, the statute reads, "For the purposes of this section, the term municipal board member is defined as any person who is appointed or confirmed by the governing body of a municipality to be a member of a board, commission, authority, or council, which is created or authorized by general law, special act, or municipal charter." So would you say that the latter qualifies this under the statute? Any person who is appointed or confirmed by the governing body of a member of a board...
Well, it's not in the charter, I'll tell you that.
Well, that's where my confusion stems.
Is that the Florida statute?
That is, correct, yeah.
Which we have to abide by, the Florida statute.
Well, yeah, but I think what I'm saying is I'm not certain that the Florida statute qualifies for this specific board unless this is one that he determines to be commission...
Well, the general law, he talks about too, but that is planning and zoning. So, I mean, there's other boards that are statutorily, you know, created, but I'll have to look at it. Like I said, I have not looked at that particular, and I'm not going to provide an answer right now without reviewing it and doing some research.
Sure, no, that makes sense.
So...
I was just wondering whether we were preempted or not because, at the very least, at the very least, I would ask for a second to move forward, unrelated to this matter, but just moving forward in general. If we don't have to have that provision in our code, it's ridiculous that we have to go to those lengths to remove a volunteer member. So if we're not preempted by state statute to do that, I would ask for a second to work with Mr. Bartosz to modify that provision of our code if we're able to.
Yeah, letter E can be taken out if we are allowed to take it out. If we don't need it, because then this way, we're operating under our home rule and we have resolutions and ordinances for our own committees.
I'll give you that second, Councilmember Long.
Thank you. All right. I think the best thing to do is let Deputy City Attorney do the research. And if you wouldn't, Mr. Deputy City Attorney, once you do the research on this particular topic, if you could provide an outline to all of council?
I would do that, yes. Okay.
Might I also remind council that we had committed to amend that ordinance as it relates to the Budget Review Committee and what the parameters were as far as removing D, if you'll remember, and some of the verbiage in there about frequency of meetings and whatnot. So we'll be bringing forth an amended, a recommended amended ordinance anyway, and so much of this might be able to be included in that when we bring that forward.
Did you ask for a second for that?
Yes.
Okay.
A while ago.
Exactly.
We did it before hiatus and we weren't able to get it completed before hiatus.
Okay.
Is that, excuse me, is that an ordinance or is that the resolution that established the BRC?
It was a resolution.
Okay, see, so we're talking two different things.
Sorry, sorry, sorry.
Let's move on, continue. Councilmember Cummings, you're good now?
I'm good, thank you.
All right. Councilmember Hayden, report?
Yeah, I want to make sure that was clarified because that was done as a resolution in the beginning where all the other committees were done as ordinances. Couple of things to correct. We may be talking about a person that might be delivering inaccurate information to Budget Review, but I want to make sure that we're not sending inaccurate information as a body out to, we're painting this Budget Review Committee as some sort of renegade or rogue group. As a person that knows them better than anybody because I served as their liaison for the last two years and most of them have been part of that committee for many, many years, I can assure you, and I don't know what this so-called box is, that the chair at the time would set the tone for the room about what they could talk about or not talk about. It would be insulting to me as a member of the Budget Review Committee to be read something that they're already, they already know a lot about in terms of, they know they're there to discuss the budget, they know they're not to discuss anything else. And I guarantee you, anytime Mr. Shadrack shared inaccurate information over the past year, I would look at Mark Mason every single time and he will assure you of that and said, "You need to correct this so that the board isn't operating with bad information." Any decision that board made, that committee made over the past two years was based on accurate information. It was based on staying within the rules of what the Budget Committee was directed and assigned to do the whole way through. So to paint a picture, that they've somehow been operating out of a box for the last two years is blatantly, blatantly inaccurate because I've been a part of it. If they needed to be brought back in line, me as the liaison certainly did that. And there were many times when that would happen. So I certainly don't want the public to think that this whole committee, for whatever reason, isn't operating under the parameters which they've been assigned to do because every single one of those members. This is at least their second budget period. For some of them, it could be their sixth budget period. And they've always operated with decorum, with professionalism. Yes, there were issues last year with Mr. Shadrack, but all that information was correct as that the board had the right information. And the board knew not to take that as gospel, what he might or might not be saying, so everybody was operating with the, on the same page, within the same parameters, with the same information. So to paint a picture somehow that the Budget Review Committee somehow needed to be brought back in line is terribly inaccurate from a person that has the experience of dealing with them. If everything continues to be directed at one member, that's the way it is. But I certainly don't want to group them into a, into a place where they're all being somehow classified as people that didn't understand the job that they were set to do because I can assure you that they do. A great day today for the fire department and for the city. We had the groundbreaking for the new fire training facility, which I was happy to be a part of. It's been a vision of the chief's and the department for a long time. It will be a game changer for public safety for our area, providing the necessary training, consistent training that our firefighters need and other departments in the area need as well. Also, I will be out of town for the August 30th meeting, so I will be requesting to appear remotely that night. And I should say the 4:30 PM August 30th meeting. Thanks, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Long?
No report.
Councilmember Shepard?
Yes, I was at the groundbreaking today for the Training Center for the Firemen and I think that's wonderful. Our men and women in the fire department will have better training and be able to protect our citizens that much better. So it's a tremendous asset to our community. And also, I'd like to put kudos out to the men and women who worked on installing curbing with our new curbing machine. Went and looked at the job they did and looks better than a job that was done by outside contractor very close by. So I was very impressed. The work looked outstanding and I know they're still learning, but man, if the first job looks that good, I'm definitely going to do better. So, good job, guys, or men and women. Thank you.
Okay. Real quickly, I guess I'll make two comments first before I get in my report. First comment, Councilmember Hayden, I listened to what you said, reference to the Budget Review Committee. You know, we do, we do have a ordinance or a resolution, actually, it's a resolution that was passed, I believe it was 99-15. And if you read that particular resolution, there is basically four criterias for the Budget Review Committee, A, B, C, and D. One of the criterias, city manager had mentioned earlier in the meeting, reference to non-governmental budgetary expense that we no longer do. So that one's off the board. The other three are applicable still in the resolution. I will tell you, if you read the resolution, that the Budget Review Board, even when I was there before you, was working outside of the box. If you read the ordinance, I'm sorry, the resolution, and you look at, I believe it's A, B, and D, they were working outside the confines of what the resolution says, even when I was there before you. It's been that way consistently over the last several years, unbeknownst probably to a lot of people until we went and looked at it.
That could also be an interpretation, too. Your interpretation of...
Ask the city manager.
What the box is might be a little bit different than maybe what I saw the last two years.
Yeah. What you saw and what the ordinance says is two totally different things.
Again...
Read the ordinance, the city manager or myself both went in...
Trust me, I've read the ordinance.
Well, then I have to, then I'm going to have to respectfully disagree with you because there's no way that Mr. Mason or city manager or myself drew the same conclusion, went into the budget review, and outlined exactly what their responsibilities were. So I have to respectfully disagree with you. With that being said, another topic of discussion, I know that this board had several months ago, was, and we had a discussion, I believe it was a committee of the whole meeting. Once we decided what boards we were keeping, which ones we were not, we were going to look at the terms. We had a discussion, I believe if I recall correctly, and Councilmember Welsh had made a recommendation of two-year terms. We talked about implementing those particular terms in December, phase in and amend. So I know we had that discussion. So tonight, I'd like to ask for a second to work with the city attorney's office to basically develop a, an ordinance which basically states that. And before I bring it, before I vote, I'll bring it back to council or the committee at the whole meeting so we can have a further discussion on that.
Second.
Okay. As far as my report is concerned, back on 7/20, I attended Southwest Florida League of Cities meeting like with Councilmember Stanky. Again, every year you move up in the executive boards. I did move from secretary up to treasurer. Following year, I'll be vice president, and the year after that, I'll be president. Also, that particular evening, I attended the Hispanic vote meeting on 7/21. The city, I believe, monthly has been putting on, and it could be more frequent than monthly, but I attended the city's Business Industrial Industry Roundtable involving the construction industry. Because of my background, I participated in that particular roundtable. I know they've had a few other ones and they have many scheduled for the months to come as well. Also attended, for Councilmember Stanky, the Budget Review Workshop on Monday, and I'll also be attending on his behalf tomorrow as well. I attended the Hurricane Ian Recovery Executive Committee here in Cape Coral, had further discussions with the recovery efforts to the hurricane and with the task force that I'm appointed to. Also attended the Republican Club last night, like Councilmember Stanky had mentioned, with our police and fire chiefs, gave a great presentation on the needs and the accomplishments of our police and fire both chiefs did an incredible job. This morning, like Councilmember Hayden had expressed, attended the groundbreaking ceremony for the fire training facility. We will have the best state-of-the-art facility when this particular construction is completed out of anyone in Southwest Florida. So the comment that I made earlier today, and I wholeheartedly believe that, we want to be leaders in our city, we don't want to be followers. And this particular project will put us in that light, where we are leaders, people will look up to us at Cape Coral. When I travel around the state now, I can't tell you how many times I hear about our police and fire here in Cape Coral, how great they are. So we have that reputation. We want to make sure we have the best men and women, the best train, these training facilities that are coming onboard and breaking ground. Police Training Facility will be here soon, is only going to enhance the quality of a firefighter or a police officer we have here in our city. So it's going to be a great, great attribute to our community once they're up and running. That's all I have. Mr. Deputy City Attorney?
No report, thank you.
Before I go to the city manager, I'm sorry, Councilmember Long, didn't see your light on.
Yes, sir. I'm looking through the resolution here for the Budget Review Committee and I'm left with more questions because it explicitly states in the resolution that any member of the committee may be removed by a majority vote of the council. It's right here.
Is that 99-15?
Unless I'm the wrong resolution, I've got 5-12.
Since it's a resolution...
Oh, that's the one prior.
Okay. I'm sure it's the same language.
Yes, since it's a resolution, it's not in the code. I mean, I don't, again, I don't have it in front of me, so I didn't know that it was that.
So what you're saying is the resolution states that any board member could be removed at any time?
By a majority of council.
Well, that would be up to Councilmember Cummings, since she made the original motion if she wanted to follow through with that. And of course, the second, whomever the second was.
It was me.
Okay. Councilmember Cummings?
Yeah. Resolution is different than what the ordinance states, so the resolution states that majority vote can remove them, so...
Okay. Then the ball falls back in your court, Councilmember Cummings. Do you want to continue with that motion or do you do not? Anybody can make the motion.
Would you like to make it?
It doesn't have to go back to you because everybody's withdrawing it, so anybody can make the motion to go back and have that discussion. So anybody can make the motion, uh, to go back and, and have that discussion. Councilmember Long? I see your light on.
No, it's not my prior light.
Does anybody want to make, uh, make that motion that, uh, Councilmember Cummings made?
I'll go ahead and make the motion. Make the motion, she removed the chair from the Budget Review Committee.
Second.
Any other discussion? See, I'm not a Madam City Clerk, call the robe.
Cummings?
Aye.
Gunter?
Aye.
Hayden?
No.
Long?
Aye.
Shepard?
Aye.
Steinke?
No.
Welsh?
No.
It's four ayes, three nays, motion carried.
Councilmember, or I'm sorry, you just got a demotion and a, and a extreme pay cut. But, uh, Mr. City Manager.
Well, in light of the discussion tonight and the disagreement about what portions of, um, the resolution say about what the, the committee should do, I think it's important that I let you all know what I've discussed with my staff because there are, there were fi-, there are five subsections. One is any other thing assigned by council. And last week during the cow, I tried to attempt to see if there was anything that you all would like them to do other than the four items specifically listed and that there was a, no indication of any specific thing to ask them. Because it's important that I know that so that my, I can then, you know, my staff also knows and we can help get the committee what, what you all need them to do. The, there's the second item of the non-departmental requests, we don't do that anymore. So that leaves us with, um, the other three items. And the other, the other three items that are listed in there, and I'm looking at 99-15, not 512. One says, review the financial management policies and provide recommendations for revisions where appropriate. So it's very clear there. You're all, you all, the board or previous councilors said, review the financial management policies and give us recommendations on them. B says, review the annual strategic plan as part of the budget process. We put it in the budget, so they have that. And A says, remove, review the city manager's proposed budget and asset improvement programs. So the asset improvement program is a, a component in there. And provide recommendations, this is where it gets narrow, provide recommendations of expenditure slash revenue allocations, not provide recommendations on expenditures and revenues. It's, it's, so when you look back at last year's discussion, they were making recommendations to provide one-time bonuses to employees. That's a recommendation on an expenditure, not expenditure allocations or revenue allocations. So that, that's where the, the issue comes in. They, they have other ones that talk about re, you know, reassign stuff to debt as opposed to, uh, being, uh, operating expense. They, they have a lot of stuff fit, but then there were some other things where they, where they kind of drifted out a little bit. You know, they, they talked about budget software and tree canopies. I mean, those were specific one-time expenditures. And so I think it's important that, that you all know that because that's the discussion I've had with my staff. And, uh, Councilmember Hayden, if you'd like to talk about, we, we probably should. I don't, if, if, if the intent is that you would like them to continue to do what they did the last couple of years, then, then we should probably have that discussion. Because the last thing I want to do is have my staff doing, supporting them, doing things that you all don't want them to be doing.
And I will say, just like I did the other day in the meeting, I'm not saying we can't change the resolution, but until we do then, we're going to work under those parameters. And I think the City Manager and myself tried to reiterate that to the board. That's where the box came from. If we want to change the box collectively as a council by a majority vote, we can do that.
You're missing the point. You're not defining this box to me. If you're talking about revenues and expenditures, which is what the budget is, you're, you're just mixing words here. Allocations, revenues, expenditures, you said it real clear to them three years ago. It's about dollars and cents. Are you changing that? It's about dollars and cents. And as far as the one-time bonuses, that was the one recommendation that they made last year that the council wanted to look into. In fact, we did, until we got to the point where, um, you know, there was, what was going to be fair, and that's when we started looking at, um, increasing the minimum wage and all that. They, they were looking at the same things we were. How do we bring people that may be underpaid up to a, a better number? So, um, if you look back at their recommendations the last two years, and I think maybe there's been four or five, um, you know, one was, one was the mileage rate, made a recommendation on that, that's certainly within their parameters. Okay? Anybody going to disagree with that one? So, you know, as you look at revenues and expenditures in the entire budget, yeah, tree canopies, of course not. But I don't remember a time over the last two years where, where that was a defining moment for that particular budget review that they might have talked about. Every single committee that we've had has gotten off course. Our Audit Committee a few weeks ago asked questions that I told them, they're not, this isn't in your purview. You know, you want to set up individual meetings with me? We'll talk about it. But this certainly isn't in the auditor's job description to answer these questions for you. Every committee has gotten off, gotten off course. And I am telling you, um, whatever this, whatever the stipulations are, if, you know, if we're restraining them in any way and determining the recommendations that they make for the budget, for the budget, expenditures, revenues, whatever they are, you know, they made a recommendation on the reserves, keep them at, that's certainly within their purview. So I think you're going to have to be real clear to me about where they're stepping outside the box. And I know it's only been a few days, but, um, if they did step outside this box the last two years, they were brought back in. You know, it wasn't like it was three years ago when they recommended a, a performance audit. You know, that wasn't going to work. That wasn't necessarily within their, within their purview. And they, and they had discussed the strategic plans in the past and all that. So, um, you know, I think defining that box and continuing with that, you know, they got a lot of meetings left. So if you got a better way for them to handle it, um, you know, go for it. I'm not the liaison anymore. I'm just telling you what I experienced the last two years. And, um, handcuffing them to anything that may result in them making a recommendation on the budget that we may want to hear, um, within their purview, within this box, um, you know, I don't want to see them limited too much, that's for sure.
I, I think if you take that specific recommendation of give an employee a bonus to get to a revenue allocation or an expenditure allocation, you, they could still make that statement by saying, we recommend that the council allocate more revenues to personnel without saying what that, that's, I think the, I think it's eas-, there's just some adjustments that just need to be made. They can still, the, let's take the tree canopy. We think you should allocate more money to medium beautification versus saying, put in a $400 or $400,000, you know? It's, I think, I think, I think it's all there. It's just, I think getting them to back up one step or drill, be one less step granular.
Anything else, Mr. City Manager?
Yeah, I had a couple of, a couple of announcements. I just want to, uh, re-announce, uh, August 2nd, the city of Cape Coral is going to be honoring, uh, Purple Heart, um, service members. And we've asked, uh, any, anybody who knows a, a Purple Heart recipient, uh, to have them contact our communications office. That is going to be, um, August 2nd. Also on August 2nd at 10:00 AM, we are going to be, um, putting forward a dedication ceremony for one space, uh, in city, in, uh, City Hall. So right in front of the three spaces that we have that are, uh, set aside for handicap spaces, uh, we are going to be putting up a sign and painting, uh, one space purple for a Purple Heart, uh, recipient. So that's going to be the same Wednesday, August 2nd, but that is going to be before the meeting at 4:30 when they come in. That ceremony is going to be at 10:00 AM, August 2nd. On August 3rd, uh, we are going to be hosting an inaugural development discussion. This is being led by Development Services. It's going to be from 7:30 AM to 10:00 AM at Nickers Pub at the Coral Oaks Golf Course. And the idea for this is to provide information on how to navigate, um, development discussions. We are going to have attendees be in contact with our CCCIA, Lee Building Industry Association, code compliance staff members, permitting members, service members, building inspections, city planning and conservation, land development, plan review, fire plan review and inspection, utilities review and inspection, and stormwater and public works review and inspection. So that again is going to be August 3rd from 7:30 to 10:00 AM at Nickers Pub at the Coral Oaks Golf Course. And then lastly, on August 5th, Saturday, August 5th, from 7:00 to 11:00 here at the City Hall Parking Lot, we're partnering with Lee County Solid Waste Division to collect bulk items and household chemical waste. So that is August 5th, 7:00 to 11:00, bulk items and household chemical waste. And that's all, man.
Okay, thank you very much. Time and place, future meeting? We have a regular meeting of the Cape Coral City Council scheduled for Wednesday, August 2nd, 2023, beginning at 4:30 PM here in Council Chamber. Still have a motion to adjourn. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Meeting adjourned.